I'd like to call to order this October 26, 2021 Board of County Commissioners Workshop Session on the Agricultural Reserve Tier. We'll start with Agenda Item 1A, which is Roll Call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Kerner.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Present.
Commissioner McKinley.
Oh.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinroth.
I'm here also.
Oh.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Thank you.
I do know that Commissioner McKinley is here, but we'll call the roll as 6-0 for right this moment, which is a quorum, and we will announce her attendance when she arrives back on the dais. We'll move now to 1B and 1C, the invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Maria Sacks. Please join me in rising.
Thank you, Mayor. The prayer: We ask you, dear Lord, to bless this meeting of people who earnestly desire to do their work in the best possible way, to benefit those we serve, and to leave to our children a better world. Please give us the wisdom and vision to plan adequately and act correctly. To achieve these ends, we say amen.
Amen.
And we do have seven county commissioners present here in the chamber. We'll move to Agenda Item 2A, additions, deletions, and substitutions. Madam Administrator, you're recognized.
Mayor, members of the board, we have no additions, deletions, or substitutions.
Move adoption of the agenda.
Motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Moreno to adopt the agenda as published. All in favor? All opposed? The agenda is adopted as published, 7 to 0. We'll move now to Agenda Item 3, the regular agenda.
Move to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file by Vice Mayor Weinroth, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor? All opposed? That item passes 7 to 0. We're on 3A. Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller, 3A2.
Move to approve.
And just for clarity, Madam Clerk, 3A1, motion by Vice Mayor Weinroth was a motion to receive and file the warrant list, and we're now in 3A2 on a motion to approve contracts and claim settlements made by Vice Mayor Weinroth and seconded by Commissioner Bernard. There's no comments by members of the public. All in favor? All opposed? 3A2 passes 7 to 0. We'll move now to Agenda Item 4A, the Agricultural Reserve Tier Workshop Session. As we're all aware, Commissioner Maria Sacks has called this workshop on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. We all are very cognizant of the hard work that she's been doing with her constituents and stakeholders. Obviously, this is an issue not limited to the agricultural reserve tier because it's an issue that impacts the county at large. So we're all delighted and appreciative of Commissioner Sacks' leadership on this issue, and we're all very much interested in the dialogue and presentations and public comment that will occur today. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Sacks for a short statement, then we'll get to professional staff.
Thank you so much, Mayor Kerner and Vice Mayor Weinroth, and my fellow commissioners. I think it's important that the public understand that today is a day, that for the entire day, or maybe not the entire day, we will, this county commission will be embarking on a review of the rules and ordinances and the zoning of the, of a very important section of our county, and that is the agricultural reserve. So as you all know, there are no cities. This is the board that governs the people of the ag reserve. So I want to thank you, to the leadership of the county commission, on behalf of the people and businesses in the agricultural reserve as we go forward on this great mission today. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. And for the public's own awareness, please understand that we have received a very large amount of public comment by email and correspondence by mail, and each and every county commissioner here today is in possession of those items, and we've had an opportunity to review them. And typically, we don't take a public comment on workshop items, but because of the importance and import of this issue, Commissioner Sacks and the board has agreed that the most effective use of our time is indeed to hear from our constituents. And so we look forward to your comments today. We will have three minutes per public speaker, and the public dialogue will be a very important portion of today's workshop. I'd like to turn it over now to the planning, zoning, and building staff through Assistant County Administrator.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good morning. Commissioner Sacks alluded to, we have a full day for you. Lot of information. You have a lot of staff here, planning, zoning, and building staff have put a lot of effort into putting this together. So the impetus for this came from Board Direction back in May. You had seen, had on your plate, a number of private requests for different development potentials in the ag reserve. And I would point out that some of us who have been around for a while, I look at Lisa and I look at Ms. Baker, we remember going back in time to about eight, nine years ago, we hit another peak of interest in it, and then going back in time to when we began the ag reserve. So we certainly look forward to getting the board's direction on how we move into this phase and your direction on what or what not to do in the ag reserve moving forward. So receive your direction, put a lot of information together. I think we've got about 105 or so slides. You have a number of staff folks here available for any questions from many, many, many disciplines. Lot of reach out has been made, so hopefully we're here to answer any questions you may have. And with that, I will hand it over to Patricia to begin our presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. We are going to be presenting a lengthy presentation. The ag reserve is quite important for Palm Beach County, so we're going to hand off a number of different slides to the different staff. And with me today, we have Lisa Marr, the zoning director, with lots of experience with the ag reserve. We have Stephanie Gregory, principal planner, amendment coordinator, and the principal planner, Brian Davis, as well, and a whole slew of staff behind us. So just to get started, at the May 5, 2021 Conference of Plan Public Hearing, the board directed staff to hold a workshop based on the number of requests of policy changes to the Conference of Plan. And today, county staff want to provide a brief overview of agriculture in all of Palm Beach County, as well as including the significance of the history of the agricultural reserve. Following the public input and board discussion, staff will be looking for direction on whether the board wants any policy changes, and if so, if any, specific direction on a number of options. We have not identified any options at this time, but we, specific changes at this time, but we are offering options for the board to decide on. So the staff presentation will include the presentation from Ron Rice from our Agriculture Extension Office on agriculture in Palm Beach County. We'll also do an overview of the managed growth tier system. As you know, the growth management here in Palm Beach County has been very important in the ag reserve, is one of those tiers as part of the tier system. We'll go over the history of the agricultural reserve master plan, as well as a history of some of the changes that have occurred from 2001 all the way to 2021 in the ag reserve. Lisa will go over the comprehensive plan policies that guide the ag reserve implementation and assessment, along with some of the bond history. That's an important part of the agricultural reserve. And some specific information on what are the self-sustaining forms that were provided from the master plan, and talk about the preserves and the density and how that works within the tier. We'll talk about the residential clustering, and we also spoke with all of the service providers as any changes to the ag reserve will most likely result in reviewing the service delivery within that tier. And then finally, we'll go over the options available from the industrial uses and residential options that were based from that May 5 public hearing, and then we'll conclude with a summary. So first, we'll start off with the agriculture status in Palm Beach County, and I'm going to turn that over to Ron Rice.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Madam Administrator, thanks for this opportunity. What I'd like to do today with this opportunity is just give an overview of agriculture in Palm Beach County. We'll focus a bit on the Everglades agricultural area, which is that region right underneath Lake Okeechobee, and then obviously also the agriculture reserve that's on the east side of the water conservation area, number one. Just broad overview, county agricultural sales exceed all counties east of the Mississippi River, roughly 1.4 billion in sales alone in 2019. The gross acreage is about 440,000 acres. We've got a lot of land under different kinds of ag production, and it's about 35% of what we have here in Palm Beach County in terms of land area. And sugarcane is the dominant crop, and it's grown in the Everglades ag area. Put this in perspective, I'd like you to know that the county leads the nation in sugarcane production, as well as the production of sweet corn for the fresh market. When we come to comparison with the state of Florida, we lead in sweet peppers, cucumbers, number of different specialty leaf crops, eggplants, and okra, and herbs. I have those highlighted in that color because those are typically grown in the ag reserve. The remaining crops there that I think you're already familiar with, lettuces all the way down through celery and sod, are typical of the Everglades ag area. There have been questions about whether we have unique soils, are the soils different? How variable are they? Do they mean anything? From my background, absolutely yes. In fact, our soils here in Palm Beach County are quite unique, and they're vastly different from each other depending on whether you're talking about the Everglades ag area, which is on the left-hand side of that slide, or the ag reserve, which is on the right-hand side. Starting with the EAA, we have organic soils. Technical term is histosols. They're formed not from the breakdown of rock over geologic time, but from the incomplete decay of aquatic plants that are in, like Everglades, wetland ecosystems. And so since it's incompletely decayed, it accumulates over time 4,000, 5,000 years, which is actually a short period of time compared to mineral soil formation. I want to point out the soil series, it might seem a little pedantic, but when you talk about do we have unique soils or not, there's about 22,000, well, there's 22,517 soil series that have been classified by USDA and RCS. These are soils that are specifically different from each other from some kind of aspect, whether it's chemistry, soil profile, layers, you know, color, chemical reactivity, and so forth. When a new soil series is detected and characterized by our soil survey scientists, they give it a name that's typical of the local area. This is a brand-new soil series, hasn't been found anywhere else in the United States, and this is work that goes back to starting in the 1920s forward. And so you'll see that our soil series, not only in the Everglades ag area with things like Pahokee, Lauderdale, Dania, but also in the ag reserve with Amakali, Boca, Riviera, have distinct names because this is the first time they were ever found here in this county. So I think that's kind of cool, actually. What's interesting about our soils, whether it's EAA or the ag reserve, is they're poorly drained. And on the firsthand, you might say, well, that's not good for agriculture. But, you know, as long as you deal with drainage and water supply and ability to drain water off, both soil types sustain agriculture, particularly vegetable production, very well. Again, EAA on the left side, ag reserve on the right, we've got sugarcane. Those are the list of the winter vegetables that dominate out there from lettuces with some specialty crops like escarole and dive. We produce a lot of celery, and then smaller crops like parsley cilantro, and then, of course, sweet corn and green beans are famous intercropping crops in between sugarcane crops. We have about 25,000 acres of rice. A lot of people don't realize that. It's small compared to other parts of the states, but it's really important to our rice growers here. In terms of infrastructure, three sugar mills, a rice mill, a bunch of vegetable packing houses. We've got the tellus plant that's producing flatware, compostable flatware from leftover crushed sugarcane products. And there you see the ag sales of exceeding 1.25 billion a year. On the ag reserve side, we've got more of the specialty crops. There are the high-dollar value crops, the multiple crops per season production plans from bell pepper to a number of Asian vegetables, squashes, eggplants, and so on. Several packing houses. I want to point out, of course, that we have other aspects of agriculture that people don't think about sometimes, which is equestrian. The pastures that sustain equestrian, equestrian competitions, and then raising of horses. And of course, we've got the landscaping and nursery industry. So if you have a little patience, I just think it's, if you're going to talk about agriculture, I think it's also important to talk about environment. And both the ag reserve, as well as the EAA, look towards the environment in terms of best management practices. These are practices that are implemented in order to protect the environment. Now for the EAA, this is a mandatory program from 1994 Everglades Forever Act that's overseen by the South Florida Water Management District. Beginning around 1995, growers were required to implement BMPs that were designed to reduce phosphorus in the drainage waters that were coming off the farm. And the whole point here is that if individual farms did BMPs, then the entire basin as a whole, for the water leaving the basin going south toward the Everglades ecosystem, would reduce the phosphorus in the drainage waters. And phosphorus had been determined as being the single plant-required nutrient that was creating the most environmentally unpreferred changes in the Everglades ecosystem. So phosphorus was targeted. The BMPs include a range of nutrient management, water management, and sediment control BMPs. And I've got just some photos just to give you perspectives in terms of fertilizer control, calibrated soil testing, combination with banding of fertilizers to improve phosphorus use efficiency and crop uptake. And then, of course, in terms of water control, these are only a couple of many that the growers can select from. I think the top right slide, internal pumps to reduce off-farm drainage, is a fascinating one. It seems like a simple thing, but by putting pumps inside the farm, you can actually hydraulically isolate different parts of the farm, grow different kinds of crops that have different kinds of water use requirements, and then drain those specific places back into some other part of the farm, as opposed to draining water off the farm to satisfy that, let's say, vegetable crop in the far back. That BMP alone has made a big difference in terms of phosphorus management. And then there's also sediment and particulate controls. Every time a farmer pumps water off his farm, water samples are collected, and in that water sample are entrained organic flocculent materials, sediments, and other things that are in the canal system. So how do we stop the entrament of those high-phosphorus species and keep them on the farm? And here's just some photos that show how this is done. I won't go through all of them, but it's interesting you have it in your handout. In summary, this started in about 1995. The requirement is that the basin of the Everglades ag area must reduce their phosphorus load by 25% relative to historical baseline data. Last year, the reduction was 59%. So, you know, that's more than twice what is actually required, so that's quite successful. If you look at the 25-year average, the annual phosphorus load reduction's been 55%. So this has been quite successful, and it's prevented over 4,000 metric tons of phosphorus from leaving the ag area going down south. We're going to move towards the ag reserve, but let's stop first in the Loxahatchee acreage area. There is agriculture there. It's performed quite well. The soils in that area are much, much, much more similar to the ag reserve than the Everglades ag area because they're mineral sandy soils. But there's been quite a bit of investment in there in terms of, again, water management so that you can grow your crops in the soils that are not easily drained. And there's been infrastructure on canals and pumps and so forth. Moving into the ag reserve, BMPs there too, at seven specific row crop farms and nurseries that lease property from Palm Beach County in order to do their ag operations. This is a different program than the EAA. It's not required by state statute. It's really a notice of intent by the growers to implement BMPs using FTX protocols, and this is reviewed quite frequently by our friends over at the Palm Beach Soil Water Conservation District. So they overview and audit the BMP programs, and if things are amiss, then they get them fixed. And there's a potential of compliance, so if everyone's doing the BMP plan, the idea is that, well, then, good results will happen because you are watching your fertilizer usage and your water management. For the row crops, the BMPs are selected from that FTX publication. It's just a list that are divided up into those different categories, ranging from pesticide management to soil protection to erosion control and nutrient irrigation. You'll see the themes are the same as we discussed in the EAA. There's about 49 BMPs that can be selected from. And then for the nurseries, again, much of the same themes, a lot more detail. There's actually 172 different individual BMPs in that nursery BMP plan. Just looking that up the other day and was really quite surprised at the detail. And the two nurseries that are involved are using anywhere from 73% to 78% of those listed BMPs, which is just amazing. They're doing a lot of work in their BMP program. Just a few pictures of the BMPs in the ag reserve, using cover crops, protecting pump stations and diesel fuel, you know, with embankments and containers. Plastic mulch actually reduces water use and herbicide usage, which is good for the environment. High-tech wobbler heads in the plant nurseries, laser leveling so that there isn't the entrament of soil sediments into the ditches, using drip irrigation, and then actually reusing plastic mulches for a second and third crop, at least certainly for a second crop. I don't know if it goes to a third crop. I'd be remiss to not mention our equestrian colleagues. You know, this is a combination of a business, as well as it's got a really high value in terms of the social benefit for families that engage in friendly equestrian competitions and grow up with horses. It's really a wonderful thing, and equestrian is represented in the ag reserve. And I'm just going to close out here with just a couple of photos from our plant nurseries in the ag reserve. And I think that completes my presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rice. Are there any questions for members of the board on the section of agriculture in Palm
Thank you. I'll be here all day.
Thank you.
Good morning. The managed growth tier system was incorporated into the comprehensive plan 1999 to create and protect quality livable communities, respecting the lifestyle choices for current and future residents, and to direct the location and timing of future development. The tier system recognizes the county's lifestyle diversity by delineating five distinct geographic regions with common characteristics such as land use patterns, densities, and intensities. The largest of the five tiers is the Glades tier, which is generally located west of 20 Mile Bend, includes the Glades communities along Lake Okeechobee. The goal of the tiers is to preserve and enhance the unique characteristics of the area, which supports large-scale agricultural production. The urban suburban tier is expected to accommodate the bulk of the county's population, which is about 90%, as well as its need for employment, goods and services, cultural opportunities, and recreation. The goal is to create and maintain livable communities in the tier while also ensuring that service and facilities are used efficiently. This tier is where higher densities and intensities exist and where redevelopment and infill development is occurring. The rural and exurban tier support large lot residential development with limited commercial. The rural tier is shown in red, and the exurban tier in blue. The goal for this tier is to support and enhance rural communities and to support equestrian and agricultural uses while providing an alternative style of development to the urban suburban tier. And finally, we have the agricultural reserve tier, which was created to encourage agriculture through the promotion of sustainable development with limited development options and the preservation of open space. And I will now turn it over to Brian to provide a history of the tier.
Thank you, Stephanie. For the record, Brian Davis with the Planning Division. I'm going to sort of flesh out the, how the ag reserve was master planned and how it fits into the tier system, how it became part of the tier, and then the development history once it became a part of the tier. The ag reserve, as Stephanie indicated, is part of the tier system. It was put in the tier system in 2001, but it goes back, has a much more interesting history. She said the objective is to preserve agriculture, environment, water, resources, and open space. And as you can see on the tier map, it is positioned between the county's urban suburban area and the wildlife management area to the west. So it has also sort of an interesting role of being a buffer and a transition between coastal development and then an actual, you know, portion of the undeveloped Everglades. So just to get into the history, the concept of the agricultural reserve as a name and, you know, the early development and concepts that really underlie it go back to the 1980 Conference of Plan. It defined the boundaries initially, which is not quite the shape we have now. It was refined over time. But it set up critically some components that continue forth to today. It established that development was at a density of one unit per five acres, that you could develop with an ag reserve plan development as an 80/20, 80% in preservation and 20% development area on at least 40 acres. And it also established TDRs, that you could send development rights outside of the area at a rate of four units per five acres. And that was really the beginning of this concept of how do we keep agriculture but accommodate some development pressure? And so that's the dialogue that has occurred ever since, is how do you maintain that balance in that unique location? So coming out of the Growth Management Act in the 80s, the county adopted a Conference of Plan in 1989, and it's the one that we still work under now. And the boundaries were defined now, subject to some development that occurred between the 1980 and 89 plans. It came down, it continued the TDR concepts, but we also put a moratorium on PUDs temporarily. We began putting a lot of concepts together, studying the area repeatedly, over and over and over again, looking at it, refining, how do we address the concepts of development and preservation of agriculture, the open space, the water, you know, issues that have been identified that are all in play there. In 1994-95, we had a 60/40 PUD concept that was created, you know, as some of these concepts were coming out. This was a much larger one, not the 40-acre minimum, but 150 acres. You had to be east of State Route 7, but you could develop at a rate of 1:1, just like you could in the 80/20. The moratorium came off, and it led to a long series of refined studies in the late 90s that led to a master plan that I'm going to walk you through. But key things to understand is the master plan process was done by both the county and the Water Management District. The Water Management District had been looking at a lot of water management issues and environmental restoration in that area, so it was a natural adjunct for them to come in and to be involved to look at the regional water management side of, you know, how did that, would that play in an impact with development and ag operations? The county hired consultants, CH2M Hill and Dover Coal, and it was a very robust public participation process that the county engaged in to build consensus, to understand, to formulate the basis of the ideas, the concepts, that were then explored and brought forward and ultimately became policy. So we had, by December of 1998, we had, sorry, I'm on the wrong page. We had the consultant-prepared interim reports, and this helped establish the main goals for the area. This was very interesting. The concept that was defined through the beginning part of that process was to preserve and enhance agricultural activity, environmental and water resources in the ag reserve, to produce a master development plan that was compatible with these goals. And it came up with, in that goal, it came up with six primary objectives. Agriculture, environmental and water issues, there was a concept of a self-sustaining form of development, to enhance open space, and to, of course, do it in a fiscally responsible manner. And so only one of those six actually talks about development, which became the main focus, I think, going forward. But the idea was this was supposed to be a self-sustaining tier and how it provided for farm and ag needs, as well as the resident needs. Going forward, we had the Phase 1 report. There were three scenarios that were ultimately prepared. We had the status quo, a no-bond option, and a bond option that was ultimately selected. The concept was how do we explore and define ways to acquire The concept was how do we explore and define ways to acquire some land to take it out of the equation, and it was to help preserve the Ag and environmental lands with the goal of reducing the potential for development in the area. We then wound up with the Phase Two, going forward by November of 1999. And critically, this looked at what was the appropriate square footage of retail, office and industrial, and how did we acquire the land and what were the potentials? And so what it came up with was this concept of no more than fourteen thousand new residential units in the tier, about eleven, or one, one point one million in between retail and office uses, those commercial uses, and three hundred and thirty thousand square feet of industrial areas that were, that could have been located at the turnpike exits in the Ag Reserve. And so that was a real high level, but this was the defining going into the late nineties and into the year 2000, as the Phase Two Master Plan process continued. Again, there was also a look at a bond report that was done, and Lisa will go into more detail on this, but the bond scenario was selected. The county was going to float bonds to purchase either environmentally sensitive lands, which were really outside of the Ag Reserve. It was a fifty-million-dollar bond, and then a hundred million for the Ag Reserve. And that was presented to the voters in March of 1999, and it passed by a two-to-one margin. And then continuing through Phase Two, we get to really the, the concepts coming forward, a lot of efforts going back and forth and bringing them back to the board, between the public and so forth, bringing these together. And the Phase Two Report coalesced all of the data and research that had been done. It brought forward all the consultant recommendations. It proposed the support for the bond that had already been passed. It came up with a master plan graphic, which I will go into in more detail, and it came up with what we can term as a new urbanism pattern, which included mixed uses, diversity of housing and employment centers located in the tier. So what we have are some images that really refine how the, the Ag Reserve was envisioned to lay out with all of those notions of how do we preserve water, agriculture, environmentally sensitive lands and open space, and accommodate development, that, that thing that we've been trying to balance for more than twenty years at that point. And the idea was to cluster the development really around two larger nodes and to keep the Ag east of State Road Seven and, you know, somewhat between those two nodes, between the Boynton and Atlantic corridors that had been done. So the idea was to preserve large swaths, swaths of agricultural land, and that was, that was how it was supposed to be done. It was supposed to be done not just through the bond referendum, which was to take land that the county could acquire through the bond purchases, but to offer through those planned unit development concepts that have been around at that point for some time, to enable the private sector to go and to provide a mechanism where they would cluster the development rights into development areas and enable, through conservation easements being placed on the farms and the Ag operations, to preserve them. And then just for comparison's sake, we have this notion of what the master plan originally envisioned and the land uses that we actually have in place now, as far as developed and preserved. And so what you will see is that, that concept of the northern piece around the Boynton Beach Corridor and down Lyons Road was largely realized. And then also looking at the south, the concept of the southern development node was largely realized. And so in a very broad, high-level sense, the, the programs that were set out in the master plan were achieved. And we got the two nodes, the traditional marketplace developments as they are originally known. That was the concept for allowing certain amounts of commercial in there, which we can also go into a little bit later. So that was the vision, if you will. Then we're in, you know, the, how do we get to the execution? At this point, the county staff took it back from the consultants. We had some more information. We brought some things back to the board. There were some recommendations that were in there that weren't necessarily favored by all or the, or the commission in the end. They included the staff recommendations, and that led to the finalization of the master plan. And why that's important is because the master plan is what led to the policies of the Comprehensive Plan as they are largely today. And so the plan policies were adopted in 2001, and that's the, you know, the, the table that you, you see effectively set by 2001 for development, to process, and for all of the rest of the implementation of the Ag Reserve to go, go forward with. All right. So in the implementation of the Ag Reserve, well, the Ag Reserve was, I wouldn't say it had four years of easy initial concept as rolling out, but it, when you look back in hindsight, things worked effectively pretty well. And then we began to have some issues that came up, which required board attention, which began, you know, modifications and refinements of, of concepts that were in the master plan and in the plan policies. The Apollonia Farms approval, which dated back to 2004, there was a use of Water Management District lands. The Water Management District, as you know, had been involved. This was one of these ideas of using lands as preserve. It was something that was not anticipated in how the county regarded the master plan. These were designated as preserves. We also talked about this in the Lake Worth Drainage thing a couple months back, if you remember that detail. But that was the first. And then shortly thereafter, we have issues where we have what became the Bethesda West Hospital. It came in for a land use amendment at Boynton Beach and State Road Seven. That came in, there was no concept of a hospital being in the Ag Reserve master plan. It wasn't entertained, but they came in, got the institutional use, and went through the hospital approval process. There was also, as the county had acquired the land, we had issues where, you know, bond purchased land had, the valuation had become so high, we had issues where we had to go back and look at putting some of the, the land back out for sale, so we decided to put restrictive conservation easements on it. And then also we have other PUDs that brought in other South Florida Water Management District lands as preserves. Going into the second decade of implementation, we have, you know, a concept of preserve swaps that had come in, various developments that had been approved. There was an administrative desire to sort of shift easements around between development areas. We, you know, that practice continues today. You've seen a number of zoning petitions, changing preserve allocations around between developments. We have packing plants with value-added Ag uses that had been prohibited. There was a concept of taking a packing plant and putting it in a preserve that where it hadn't been before. That was something that had been prohibited by policy. It was allowed to come forward. We had the tier change that was looked at for the Thomas Packing Plant at State Road Seven and Clintmore, that northeast corner. That was actually processed and taken out of the tier in the end. It's the one time the Ag Reserve tier changed from the adopted boundaries that Stephanie had looked at. Under all of the pressure at that time, we saw a lot of proposed changes. We went back to having roundtables in 2014, 2015, and it, it brought forth a whole number of issues that we saw. It was sort of the last wave of development changes to this. The issues of preserve contiguity, there had been a requirement that the PUD and TMD preserves had to be contiguous to existing farmland or other preserves, and if they couldn't, that had been removed. We had pre-existing uses that were in the tier that predated the Ag Reserve. The county commission advised us to come back and to make changes to effectively grandfather them, give them the commercial uses. We had farm residences where we were, before they had, you know, been restricted to one unit per five acres, they were now seeking to keep the residents in place but trend, you know, transfer out the density to PUDs so they could also take advantage. And that was one of the issues that came up over time, was a small parcel, large parcel or large Ag operation. We've seen a whole slew of commercial, which we can go into in more detail later, the landscape services issue that you all are also aware of, and then more recently, the Lake Worth Drainage District Preserves and light industrial issues that have come in over, over the years. And you will see some of the pending things that we have that are more recent. We have concepts of congregate living. Again, all these were not entertained in the original master plan and adopted policies, allowing preserve parcel excavations for water ski lakes. That was somebody that came in and just decided to go do it on their own. It was a code enforcement case. They're trying to clean that one up, but we'll see how that, that plays out. Converting the Delray Marketplace Preserve into a medical office use. Preserve requirements for mixed uses has been under assault lately to just completely do away with them, rather than having a sixteen-acre threshold. That was the change a few years back. Increasing commercial square footage caps, that was something that had been long in the policy, and it's slowly been eroded and increased. Increasing uses west of State Road Seven, allowing higher density with workforce housing has also been floated of late, and allowing preserves outside of the Ag Reserve tier. So that brings us up to where the Ag Reserve is now at a very high level. We will go into more detail with it. But I also want to present you with a concept that has been discussed to some extent as a sidebar discussion. Going back out to the Central Western Communities area, this is the area north of Southern, south of Northlake and west of the water catchment area, or grassy waters. This was an area that we had long studied. There had been a lot of large Ag operations there, almost concurrent with the Ag Reserve, totally outside of the Ag Reserve, though. There had been a desire to look at development scenarios for that area, and this was one that had come up for the better part of fifteen years to, you know, as to what would happen at this particular parcel, the Indian Trails Grove. This is west of Seminole Prep Whitney. It's about five thousand acres. It's in Ag use. It's currently in Ag. It has been in Ag for about forty or fifty years. It had been a grove operation. It was one of those that was certainly affected by the various citrus blights, and it has now gone over to more row crop issues, or row crop production. All right. In 2016, we received an application to take the Indian Trails Grove and to develop it as a planned unit development, consistent with what we called the Sector Plan Settlement Concept. That was the last board direction. At the end of that process, it was never adopted, but it had become sort of a guiding instrument that the county had used for looking at the other developments in that area. GL Holmes brought this application in there, the landowner, and they were looking to use those concepts. And so very quickly, the development concept was to develop at point eight units per acre. It's a, you know, almost five thousand acres, so that yields about four thousand units in the end, under the math. There were concepts very similar to the Ag Reserve to cluster development and to save land for other uses. And so there was, you know, also a balance of non-residential uses, very much like the Ag Reserve. It's come almost like an Ag Reserve in one shot. There were more than a thousand acres set assigned for water resources and agriculture in addition to a solid six hundred and forty acres or one square mile, also intended for an impoundment area for Indian Trails Improvement District. And the reason all that was there was there was a demonstrated, you know, requirement that the county had long sought. If you were going to develop out there, you needed to provide the infrastructure necessary. So that was part of the approval, was providing all of these public benefits, because there certainly would also be impacts to that community, the acreage, Loxahatchie Groves and whatnot. And so these were critical parts of the approval, and also, even though it's not a requirement of the tier, there was a condition for workforce housing units to be provided, and then a percentage of ten percent of the units overall. And so that was the approval that we had in place in 2016. They came through, got a zoning approval in 2019. But the, why this is, I think, more relevant was shortly after the original land use approval in 2016, in the fall of 2017, they came in for a, what we termed the swap. This is not a new concept. The idea goes back to probably 2007 of swapping land in the Ag Reserve for this Western Communities residential area, which was the overlay we eventually put into place for it. So shortly thereafter, it came, they came in, made an application. We were processing the amendment to effectively look at ways to link the Ag Reserve and the Western Communities residential overlay. It was fundamental changes to the Ag Reserve tier is what it entailed. It was to allow land outside of the Ag Reserve to have, you know, development rights that would go into the Ag Reserve, and then land that had been placed in reserve in the Ag Reserve would be freed for development. And so it was really contrary to this notion of, you know, preservation of agriculture within the tier, the environmental sensitive lands, open space, it was going to allow a lot of development. It was effectively going to be the end of the Ag Reserve as a concept. The rules would have stayed in place, but they would have morphed greatly. It allowed institutional uses west of State Road Seven, which had been a part and parcel thing in the Ag Reserve ever since the master plan effort. And it also significantly revised, for the first time since 1980, the eighty-twenty contiguity rule. And so that was very, very startling, but I will say, this has never been heard in public. The application was made. As soon as the staff report was repaired, the applicant withdrew the application, and this did not go forward. So this is an undiscussed, undisclosed, or not undisclosed, but concept that has been out there and is being discussed again. We are aware of it. We just want to understand, make you aware of it as part of the information. And with that, I will turn it over to Lisa to begin discussing the Ag Reserve policies.
Let's just take a short break there and allow members of the board to ask any questions on the section. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Yeah, just a question, Brian. Since you brought that up, I think it's a little unclear to bring it up just in the context of a development. Weren't there environmental benefits that were a part of that discussion? Major environmental benefits?
For ITG.
For the, the quote-unquote swap that you just referenced?
There, yes. I would, this is more looking at it from the Ag Reserve perspective, the slide that was presented. There would have been, obviously, the, the maintenance of agriculture, the continued agricultural operation in the WCR area. I don't know about, there would have been environmental benefits. There was, I think, some questions to what they would, had to, would there have been the requirement to actually provide the impoundment areas and, and other, you know, concepts for drainage or, or whatnot out there?
Okay. Ms. Baker, before the end of the day, if Jeremy McBrien could come down and explain what the environmental benefits were on that proposal, I just think it's unfair to only take it in the context of all they wanted to do is build.
Well, if I could, Commissioner, put that into a bit more context. When the 2016 approval went through, the Water Management District had, was very early conceptually studying flowways and whatnot. That took place completely independent of this and the swap operation. I'm simply trying to put the concept of the swap in context to where it was then. I know the Water Management District has done more exploring of other concepts of impoundment and flowways, and that parcel has been contemplated by the Water Management District for those, those items. It just simply wasn't in the analysis done in 2017.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. Commissioner Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Davis. A couple of questions for you. In one of the, on slides thirty-five and thirty-six, there's a blue, large blue water body. What hap, what was it and what happened?
I mean, I can adjust that one. At the time, South Florida Water Management District wanted an east coast buffer. They wanted to assemble a large swath of land to help in water retention and drainage leading into the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge. That concept was South Florida Water Management District's, and they ultimately dropped that idea as having a reservoir there. Subsequently, they did their sites west of Wellington, STAs, I believe they're called, and other different kind of techniques that they've done, and they have the GKK mining area that became a water retention as well. So this concept was not pursued by the district, so it no longer is anticipated.
And you mentioned that the commercial cap at the Ag Reserve had been exceeded. Can you, can you, because my understanding was that there were entitlements given that were never utilized.
I could explain that one, too. So at the time of the master plan, the, the idea was for a million square feet of commercial, and the board said, no, seven fifty suitable. And then that was the adopted figure from the comp plan policies from 2001 through about 2015. And then in 2015, we had direction from the board to look at allowing, number one, giving the pre-existing commercial sites a commercial future land use designation so that they can be recognized as full commercial sites. That's where the Joseph's Deli is, for example, where the Wawa is on State Road Seven. We gave those commercial land use designations, and in order to do that, we upped the cap a little bit. Then there was a series of maybe three or four private requests at the same time. Those were asking for more commercial, and the board upped the cap to one million square feet. And then a small request came in, and now it's at one million and fifteen thousand. So those were policy decisions by the board between 2015 and today to, to slightly modify the cap to, to make it a little larger.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and this has been very helpful in giving us sort of a context over time. So it sounds like the, the board, when this was adopted initially, had targeted seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet, and that was between 2001, 2015. And then from 2015 today, in the last six years, the amount of commercial that's been allowed has grown by two hundred and fifty thousand. I mean, that's not a slight increase. That's like thirty-three percent, I think, from the original amount. And it's important to view that in the context of, found on page twenty, slide forty, you had referenced on two different places, Lake Worth Drainage District Preserve, and, well, let me ask, what was the initial amount of units? what was the initial amount of units that was contemplated in 2001?
During the development of the master plan, as Brian mentioned, there was three different scenarios examined. The status quo, the no bond, and the bond. And the concept in 1989, 1999, was that we, if we went to do the $100 million bond for purchasing land in the agricultural reserve, that we would purchase up to 6,000 acres. Therefore, when the bond one was chosen, the bond scenario, and when we did the data and analysis for service delivery, roads, fire rescue schools, it was all based on a reduction in the 2,000 unit, no, 20,000 potential that was available at the time, reducing it by 6,000 units to get the 14,000. That was the figure that was anticipated in 1999, when they did the bond analysis, when they did the, the impact analysis, and we did the master plan and the policies and the roadway systems. However, during the course of the expenditures, of the voting and the time and the purchases, it took quite a while to purchase the land. We bought ultimately, as I was explaining in the next slides, about 2,400 acres that we own today with the bond dollars. So, the, you know, the mathematical analysis was done at the 14,000, but at the, but at the end of the day, the bond purchases were about 2,400, 2,400.
How would that change, the amount of anticipated dwelling units?
Well, because the data and analysis was done at a fixed point in time, there, and this is kind of going to lead us to our conclusion later in the presentation, there hasn't been another ag reserve-wide analysis of, of future development potential. As far as the number of units approved right now, we're totally on track for the 14,000. We've got just under 11,000 approved in the AGR PDDs, and then we have some extra units that are not in AGR PDDs. But, so we're, you know, we're within the range that we were anticipated at the time.
All right. And on the increase of the 750,000 square feet to 1,015,000 square feet, just because those square footage units aren't built out at this time, those entitlements stay with the land essentially in perpetuity, correct?
They do, because they were adopted by ordinance on the individual parcels. And the only way that the county attorneys determined for us to take those square footages off is by ordinance. Last year or the year before, we were before the board with a private request for West Boynton Farms. They had in their prior ordinance up to, I think, 40,000 or 60,000 square feet. They were proposing to reduce the retail down to 20,000 and add self-storage. So, at that time, the board directed that we reduce that figure of retail in their ordinance, and then that enabled other properties to come in and use that square footage without having to increase the cap.
Is it fair to say the, the best way to look at commercial is not what's been built, but what is allowed to be built?
It's a fair way of looking at it.
All right. I don't see any other light, so we'll go to agricultural reserve policies.
Okay. So, all that background brought you where to, where we are today. So, this is the recap of the policies of where we are, and the foundation of all those policies stemmed from those six objectives from 1989, 1999, which were for the ag reserve to enhance potential for agriculture, enhance environmental resource value, enhance water management capability, create a self-functioning, self-sustaining form of development, enhance open space, and minimize cost to the taxpayers. So, again, all of those policies, I mean, all of those objectives turned into various policies that we have for the tier. And, you know, so let's see how we've done. So, we've done a tremendous job of enhancing agriculture, environmental lands, and open space. We've done that through the bond, as mentioned, the 2,500 acres, and through preserving land through the AGR PDDs. Self-sustaining form of development, well, not as much as anticipated by the consultants, perhaps. They really envisioned kind of a new urbanist form on Boynton and Atlantic. That's the form that we have is more of suburban in character. And as far as cost and impacts to the taxpayer, you know, we did utilize the bond funds effectively, and we also have considered all, you know, that analysis in 1999 considered the impacts to the county, and that was the basis for the bond. So, here's a snapshot today. We use this slide a lot. It shows that we have, in different colors, the beige color is the residential and non-residential lands. We have 6,000 acres in residential. We've got almost 13,000 acres of land in preserve in the various colors of the lighter green. We've got other remaining lands, and this slide shows about 1,700 acres, that's slightly less, well, a bit less, considering that Whitworth Farms is 578 acres or so, and that is now under contract for GL Homes. So, this is closer to like 12,000 acres as other remaining lands. Only half of Whitworth Farms has come in to date and had approval by the board, so this figure's slightly lower. And we have some other uses in the ag reserve and the total land area of about 22,000 acres. With regard to the bonds, as mentioned, the, there was $150 million bond passed, 100 of which was for the ag reserve, and we've mentioned the 2,400 acres the PPC owned. There's 12 active leases in agriculture in the reserve today. Now, as mentioned by Brian, there's two instances that we have sold bond land to private landowners. The first one is McMurray and Barrow Farms. You're all very familiar with McMurray, and because it was a larger piece purchased by the county with bond money in 2000. And then, we shared that land with South Florida Water Management District, and over the past few years, we've acquired the full ownership of that land. Now, in 2006, we did an RFP, and for $1 million or so, we sold 50 acres to Barrow Farms. We did record a conservation easement, and we restricted the uses on that property and retired any development rights. There's also corresponding policy language in the plan that states that the development rights are extinguished on bond purchases. The other bond purchase we have is called Brookside. We purchased this 75-acre tract for $5.3 million in 2003. Following an RFP, there was three competitors seeking to purchase the property. We ended up on one that, we sold the property for $3.2 million. Again, just like Barrow Farms, we put a conservation easement on that property, and we retired the development rights. On this one, there's been multiple requests to change the uses on that land, a 2007 request for a farmer's market. There's been requests in 2010 to 2011 for institutional uses, and they attempted a pre-application in 2014 for commercial and expanding some of the Delray Marketplace to the south. As far as the self-sustaining form, you know, that idea of the mixed-use urban corridors have not exactly realized, as mentioned. The ideas for the mixed-use centers, they were envisioned by the consultant to go all along Boynton and all along Atlantic, but the board decided really two primary corners. One is known at Canyonstown Center on Boynton, and the other is Delray Marketplace. There's another thing that was proposed by the consultants that was not furthered by the board is economic centers. The consultants proposed 350,000 square feet of employment centers, one at Boynton in the Turnpike, one at Atlantic in the Turnpike. And the board, as they wrapped up the master plan process, didn't want that regional draw coming into the ag reserve, so they did not move forward with those changes. So, again, to recap, you know, some of the policies we have today is to limit commercial and mixed-use development to only the farm workers and residents. The cap was intended to not serve as a regional draw, and then we have the two primary centers. And initially, all commercial land required a 60% preserve. However, with the changes that were done in 2015, 2016, the board decided to say that if the commercial request is less than 16 acres, they wouldn't require a preserve area. The decision was the preserve area would be so small, it wasn't necessary for the commercial operation. Again, the, the urban form didn't really realize as anticipated, neither did the multifamily development as envisioned by the plan. Industrial development, we've seen a lot of requests over the past few years. There is no policy guidance in the plan today, because the board did not want any industrial development in 1999. They didn't want the two employment centers, and they didn't really want any industrial. We, however, because there's no policies, there's no prohibition to industrial requests, so we've seen a couple this summer. Sunflower, we've seen Las Farmas, that's coming up on November 3rd, and it's a challenge for staff, because industrial future land use designation allows an incredible range of heavy industrial uses, not really tailored for the ag reserve. Also, a lot of those uses are P for permit. They could go straight to building permit. They would never go through the DRO approval process for a staff review, never go to zoning commission, never go to the Board of County Commissioners. So, once we grant an industrial land use designation, they really have a lot of opportunity currently without any policy guidance. So, again, here's the, here's the two centers that we have, that was envisioned by the master plan, and this was the vision that was proposed in the master plan. Really, they saw more of a, kind of a Key West-y kind of flavor that really didn't evolve. And again, here's Boynton Beach Boulevard, and there's the center. Oh, I failed to mention, in 1999, the board decided that only one quarter-mile around Boynton Beach Boulevard and Lions, and Atlantic and Lions could achieve commercial land uses, and that's been slightly modified for the year. All of the red graphics on this one, they were pre-existing, that predated the master plan. And then, there's Canyon Town Center, another view. And here's Atlantic Avenue and the Quarter Mile Circle. There has been some commercial requests west of here that was beyond the circle, but that predated, to some extent, the, the new hospital use there predated the master plan on one acre, and the board approved for up to 11 acres in 2015. The other Wawa, Wawa's over here, that predated the plan, and then these two uses predated the master plan as well. And this is Delray Marketplace, the large one. This is an aerial view of Delray Marketplace and another view. So, preserves and density. Go to my slide here. So, again, what's critical to the ag reserve is the preserve requirement for new uses. The policy digressive to preserve land has been achieved through that bond and through the AGR plan developments. The density, this flat density in the ag reserve is one house per five acres. However, the developments can achieve one unit per acre if they do a 60 or 80% preserve. And this graphic here shows all of our ag reserve plan developments approved to date. There's about 12,000 and a half total acres and almost 11,000 units approved. That includes both the traditional marketplace at, at Delray and Canyons as well. Now, the preserved lands through this process has about 2,700 acres of government-owned lands and 4,600 acres or so of privately held land. That's kind of the Kelly Green that is in preserve, and the development rights have been stripped. Now, although the master plan envisioned multifamily and townhomes, all of the development within these PDDs has been single-family and zero lot line. There is multifamily approved within the commercial centers, however, that hasn't been built. This slide shows the 16 approved AGR PUDs. These are the residential approvals, and the over 10,000 units approved within them. And again, for some visuals, this shows what it looks like for one unit per five acres. That's the base density. Prior to 1980, you can do one unit per 2.5 acres at some point in the ag reserve, and there's what that looks like on the air photo. And here's another predating one unit per acre at the bottom. Now, that's what one unit per acre looks like if it's not clustered. The lots are one acre, and there's open space and such. However, in the ag reserve, what we do is we take the total land area, and the minimum for a plan development is 250 acres. We take that total land area of 250, and we cluster the residential development onto the development area, which in this case, the minimum was 100 acres. And we have, the projects have a set aside a preserve area, which is 60%, and all of those units are moved over into the yellow area, which is the development. This results in a net density of about 2.5 units per acre, and this is that 60/40. We also have the 80/20, but it's much less popular than the 60/40. So, this is a visual of what it looks like. This is Cobblestone AGR PUD. This is 250 acres total. Shows what a typical, this is the minimum, the 100-acre development area looks like with those single-family and zero-lot line homes. And it shows what a preserve area in scale would look like. This is the 150 acres. And that net density on that orange part is 2 and 1/2 units per acre. Now, this is not the actual preserve for Cobblestone. It just happened to be next door, and it worked well on the graphic. But this one, Palm Meadows, this is the preserve and the development area. This is another instance where the preserve area for, in this case, equestrian uses, the development has been clustered onto that development area. And in this case, the total land area is 462. They clustered the developments onto the buildable area. They did not develop all 462 units that they could have, and actually, they developed 288 units. So, their density is a little bit lower than the typical of 1 point, I mean, 2.5 units per acre. And again, about residential clustering, you know, there's been a lot of discussion as why there's no multifamily in the ag reserve. Well, in order to do it, in order to develop multifamily in the ag reserve, you would have to keep clustering your development area down to get a higher density. And so, rather than the traditional 60/40, which has 40% development area, in order to get a, a high density, in this graphic's case, of 10 units per acre, you'd have to cluster that down to a 25-acre development area and preserve 225 acres. And no developer has chosen to go that route. Of course, they can, but they've chosen not to do that, because they've chosen to maximize the 40% development area. So, in either case of this graphic or the prior graphic, it's still 250 units, but to get a higher density of 10 units per acre, because we only do one unit per acre, that 250 gets shrunk down, and no one's chosen to do this option. So, there are some multifamily just outside the ag reserve. This is Atlantic Commons. Pod B is about nine units per acre, and their Pod C1 is almost 15 units per acre. So, this is what it looks like visually, and this is what it looks like, just outside the ag reserve. And that's, you know, that development, well, this one's easier to explain. So, here's Lennox, one that was before recently. This is 11 acres. It's 250 units. The net density is 22 units an acre. If this were to be built in the ag reserve today, those 250 units would need 250 acres, and the development would have to be squished down to that 11-acre development area, and there would be 230 acres of preserve. So, this is why we're not seeing this development, because of that base one-to-one. And this is some more views of Lennox, which is now Emera, Emera. And here's another development very close to the ag reserve. This is called Uptown Boca, who was before this board as John's Glades West. This is another, this is an example of clustering inside the urban suburban tier. In this case, in this case, the total land area in the picture is 38 acres, and what they did is they clustered the 12 units per acres gross over the entire land area, and they clustered that to the back for 25 net units per acre. And so, you could see that the development area at the back, it's 18 acres, there's 456 units, and there's no units on the blue part, which is where the commercial is. So, clustering works inside the urban service area. It works as well as the ag reserve. However, if this development were to occur in the ag reserve, for those 456 units, you would need a 456-acre development area and to cluster down, and you would have, you know, upwards of 430 acres in preserve because of that one unit per acre cap. And so, this is another graphic of what Uptown Boca looks like, five stories. And now, I'll turn it over to Patricia for service delivery and providers.
Thank you so much, Lisa. We are going to cover the service provider information that we gathered. We have a lot of departments actually available here in person, as well as on WebEx, including Jeremy McBryan. He's on call and able to come in if needed. We have, in anticipation of this discussion, we wanted to ensure that we took a look at the service provider information. This is something that the master plan also anticipated and had a consultant that looked at service providers and did an entire estimation of what the maximum number of density and intensity square footage would be, and then projected how much each service provider would need. From this From this screen, on the slide, you see the number of different departments and agencies that we coordinated with. So, in anticipation of that, we did ask a representative of each department to provide us some information and with their current and projected needs of the ag reserve, just based on the current and projected population. Just looking back in the 1999 master plan, at the time, the consultant estimated that maximum number of residential units just based on the existing regulations and square footage. The maximum scenario was provided to the county service providers and these departments and agencies indicated what the impact to their capacity would be based on 14,000 new residential units and approximately a million square feet in retail and office. So, this is just an exhibit from that particular master plan. And today, what we'll provide is the information for, of the existing capacity as well as the future projected needs for each one of the departments. So, first, we'll go with the fire rescue department. The existing stations are at Hypolexar Road and Lyons Road and at Boynton Beach and the Florida Turnpike. These future stations are going to be projected at the central location, located at the southwest corner of Lyons and Flavor Pickt. There's another one, future station, located somewhere near Lyons and Linton Road, west of the Turnpike, within the agricultural reserve. And a third station will be located somewhere north, somewhere off of 441 between Hypolexar and Boynton Beach Boulevard. An additional station may be required on the southwest end of the ag reserve depending upon the future development and any increases of changes in density and intensity. Obviously, a good road network is extremely important to fire rescue. So, as we move forward, if there are any changes, it would be important to take a look at that. And just thanks to Chief Durin and staff Jill Gregory for their input on that. For Parks and Rec, they have a few existing parks. The Canyon District represents a standard active park in the ag reserve. It's expected to be fully developed in 2023. There's also an existing park at the West Delray Regional. This is primarily a passive park in nature and mostly programmed by small user groups, archery, the RC Flyers, off-road biking. For the future, there is an Indian Mounds Regional. If it's developed, it will be a passive park, given the nature of the site. And as far as projections for Parks and Rec Department, using the population allocation model projections that's published by Planning, Zoning and Building, they provided some level of service in the tables provided in the slide. They will be exceeding park level of service for district and regional parks through 2045 based on that population projection, even with the removal of the Indian Mounds Regional property. And I want to thank Bob Hamilton and Eric Hall and Jennifer Surilo for their assistance in that. For libraries, there is a new library at the Canyon Branch, sorry, at the Canyon Town Center called Canyon Branch Library. This is anticipated to meet the future needs in this region of the county. That's located at the Boynton Beach Boulevard and Lyons Road. There's also just near the ag reserve, the Hagan Ranch Road Library that's existing. It serves the area and it's located just east of the agricultural reserve on Hagan Ranch, north of Atlantic. The West Boca Library existing today also serves the area and that's located south of the agricultural reserve on State Road 7, approximately a half-mile from south of Clintmore Road. And thanks to Doug Crane for his input on that. The Palm Beach County Environmental Resources Management owns and manages approximately 216 acres of natural areas called the East Coast Conservation Area. Adjacent to the South Florida Water Management District, there are approximately 2,500 acres known as the Strazula Wetlands. That's a project under the program umbrella of the Conference of Everglades Restoration Plan. And moving forward, the department will continue to regulate specific environmental issues, including reviewing the native trees and native upland preserves on commercially-developed properties and beauties, regulation of petroleum storage tanks and wellfield protection, regulation of lake excavations that may result from existing or new developments in the region, and finally, continue to perform site management for petroleum-contaminated sites. Thanks to Deb Drum for providing us that information. And the school district, we coordinated with Chris Garrison and Jason Link on this. They provided a table that was pretty interesting to see the number of total students within the ag reserve. There are 3,433 students living in the ag reserve today or as of February of 2021 this year. And on the mid-to-long-range planning horizon, based on existing and projected population, the need is for at least one elementary school and a middle school in the unincorporated bulk of Delray area. It does not necessarily need to be located right within the ag reserve. If more development is approved, the school district did say that they are, the need would obviously increase and they would need to reevaluate that information. But as you can see, there are a number of students going to charter schools, private home education and other education schools. Water Utilities Department, thanks to Alibiyat, provided us that the existing water and wastewater treatment capacities are sufficient to support the current and projected population. That's again, based on the population allocation model that we coordinate with all the departments. Collection and distribution will be handled with the county's existing developer agreements as stated in the master plan. Of course, any increases, they will reevaluate. With water management, through Jeremy McBrien, a guiding objective prioritized by the board during the development of the ag reserve master plan was to enhance water management capability. And to that end, there are some future studies that would need to be done, including additional hydrologic and hydrolot, hydrologic and hydraulic studies would be, would enable improved water resource analysis, evaluation of existing and future land use scenarios, problem area identification and evaluation of potential solutions, more accurate flood insurance rate maps, the firms, and identification of water quality and water supply needs. There also will need to be, of course, a lot of collaboration with the South Florida Water Management District, with Lake Worth Drainage District, that are all part of the county and the community. So, thanks to Jeremy for that information. And we get to the engineering and Palm Tran, the mass transit within the ag reserve. So, traffic impacts and service delivery always comes up during a lot of the site-specific amendments and discussions that we have. There is a policy directive, of course, to ensure that there is adequate planning. Policy 3.5D, of course, limits approvals based on traffic at the future land use amendment stage. And the master plan did anticipate approximately 14,000 units. So, we did have an anticipation of those number of units coming into the ag reserve and the engineering department and Palm Tran planned for those units. So, we'll be providing you information on the roadways, existing future lanes and also mass transit. Thanks to David and Mo Alturk, David Ricks, Morton Rose, Quasi Barry from Engineering and Clinton Forbes, Levi McCollum and Yash Nagal from Palm Tran for their input on these slides. So, first, we'll take you through the thoroughfare right-of-way identification map just to show you what the future lanes, lane width will be. This is the basis for preservation of roadway right-of-ways within the county. And it's a long-range planning tool. We've come to you several hearings with additional inputs into that thoroughfare map. We just want to go over a few of these items. So, State Road 7, right now, on the thoroughfare map is 240 feet. That's an FDOT state road. Lyons Road, highlighted in orange there, is 110 feet. That is a county road. Again, this is 110 feet identified in the future long-range planning tool. Boynton Beach Boulevard goes from 120 to 126 feet. That's owned by FDOT. Atlantic Avenue is 110 feet, also owned by FDOT. And Flavor Pickt Road, future road, is depicted as 120 feet, owned by the county. As far as existing and future lanes, we, for State Road 7, there are four to six lanes today and will, projected to be up to eight lanes. Lyons Road, let me make sure that we have. Oh, there we go. Lyons Road are two lanes today and they are projected to be up to six lanes. In 2023, four lanes from Boynton to Flavor Pickt. And 2025, four lanes from Flavor Pickt to Atlantic. In Boynton Beach Boulevard, we have four to six lanes today and will go up to six lanes, projected. And Atlantic Avenue, two to four lanes today and upwards to six lanes. 2024, four lanes from Straight Road 7 to Lyons. And past 2026, will be six lanes from Lyons to the Turnpike and Jog. And finally, Flavor Pickt Road, zero lanes today, but up to six lanes in the future. Okay, with Palm Tran, currently Palm Tran Route 73 serves the ag reserve area along Boynton Beach Boulevard. There's another Route 81 along Atlantic Avenue that serves an area about three-quarters of a mile shy of the ag reserve. So, it doesn't go into the, all the way to State Road 7. But Palm Tran has indicated that both of these routes can be extended to State Road 7 in the future if such a need arises pending availability of resources. And finally, our coordination with the Office of Resilience provided a number of items. This has been a very important topic for the county. And the Office of Resilience supports policies and programs that help the county mitigate climate change impacts. And with that, the principles for the built environment include creating walkable communities, increasing density, mitigating sprawl where feasible, including robust, affordable housing strategies and protecting environmentally significant land. In discussion with Megan Houston, the community gardens and tools that support urban agriculture can help increase the resiliency of food systems and providing food access. Natural areas and agricultural areas can be important resources for carbon sequestration as well. And it is important to balance the many interests of Palm Beach County and will need to be tailored to respond to individual community needs. And finally, Palm Beach County has adopted the Climate Compact's Regional Climate Action Plan. The updated RCAP 2.0 version has several goals of relevance to the agricultural reserve, including ensuring the continued viability of agriculture in the southeast Florida in the face of climate change, implementing monitoring, management and conservation programs designed to protect natural systems and the services they provide to society while improving their capacity for climate adaptation on natural systems, on social equity to guide and support municipalities and counties to create equitable climate policy programs and decision-making processes that consider local, social, economic and racial inequities. Sustainable communities and transportation is also a key goal to adapt to the impacts of climate change and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by reshaping where and how to build and move from place to place. And finally, in regards to water, advance the water management strategies and infrastructure improvements needed to mitigate the potential adverse impacts of climate change and sea level rise. Department staff are available, as I mentioned, either in person or on WebEx should the board have any questions for them. And the last, finally, we get to the two uses of question from the May 5 hearing. And I'm going to turn it over industrial for Lisa and then I'll come back with the residential option.
So, today is to hear feedback from the board. And of course, we'll have a public comment option as well. But for industrial lands in specific, some of the things, oops, where did it hit? We're here today, as you know, because of the direction on May 5. One of the items on that agenda was industrial. And, you know, as mentioned previously, the issues we have with industrial lands in the ag reserve is that there's no policy guidance, no location criteria. Many of the uses allowed in industrial are commercial and therefore would be subject to the commercial cap. But it's very difficult to implement with policy restrictions on individual amendments like conditions of approval because many of the zoning districts in industrial are IL and IG. And without a conditional overlay zone, it's difficult to put conditions on them. It's not impossible, but it is difficult. And again, you know, some of those permitted uses have no BCC approval and no site plan. And they're heavy in some cases. Options we've discussed for industrial would be to add policy language if the board sees fit, perhaps establishing location requirements, whether it's regional allowed or limited to local or both. Maybe we would have frontage requirements such as on, limited to State Road 7, Boynton, Atlantic, maybe portions of Lyons. Maybe we draw bubbles and have overlay areas. That was something that was proposed a bit a couple of years ago. Establishing use limitations, ideally limiting to light industrial uses with no commercial uses. Discuss whether or not it would require a plan development or straight zoning districts. Discuss whether or not a preserve would be required. Commercial, as stated previously, under 16 acres does not have to have a preserve requirement. So, that seems like a solid baseline. And then, one of the ideas that we discussed previously is that the county doesn't have a light industrial land use designation for the ag reserve or the urban suburban tier. Establishing one might be appropriate. There's one in Delray that we've looked at called Commerce Future Land Use Designation. It's light industrial and storage and such. It might provide a nice framework for something that we can have in the tier. That way, if the board approved this site, it would already be limited in what the uses are because it's a special new future land use designation. We don't need conditions of approval necessarily. So, you know, theoretically, if the board went that route, we could limit requests to the commercial, new commercial, commerce flu, rather, not commercial. Or maybe the Economic Development Center. Economic Development Center is a future land use designation. That's for more of a regional aspect. So, if the board was not interested in regional industrial uses, that probably would not be a future land use designation that we would allow. Requiring site plans and probably concurrent rezoning so the board could see the full picture. And again, you know, if the board wanted to consider regional, you would look at the whether or not we want to allow such uses adjacent to the Turnpike. That would require changes to the plan that currently limit non-residential to only, well, the theoretically only residents of the tier. So, those are some ideas to throw out there for now. And then, we can recap, as Patricia said, at the end. And I'll turn it back over to Patricia.
Okay, we're nearing the end. We're on slide 103. Okay, so, the board directed this workshop when the, when there was a proposed amendment back in May 5, Reserve at Atlantic. While we're not speaking specifically today on site-specific items, we did want, the board did want to discuss the need for workforce housing in the ag reserve, but wanted to discuss further to ensure appropriate locations and densities if those changes are needed. And with that, the board provided some guidance at the May 5 hearing, initial guidance on basic parameters such as units being on-site, near ag reserve workplaces and not be bought out or off-site. So, we understand some of those board directives. So, we begin with those parameters as well as the basic ag reserve premises of the one unit per acre and 60% preserve requirement consistent with every other residential development option in the ag reserve. So, in looking at the ag reserve, oops, sorry. There were a number of issues identified. The land uses are not balanced. We have a lot of residential developments that are just single-family. There's not a mixed use of developed units, although we do have a certain approved, multifamily units approved for the traditional marketplace developments. The new urban higher-density design hasn't really resulted in those two areas. We've received many new amendment applications for much higher density. One of the applications that was requested last year was for, we wouldn't even include density above two stories, but they could build as high as possible. So, the unique request, but within the agricultural reserve tier, we were not able to accommodate that, obviously, with the current existing policies.
And while multi-family is allowed, it's not likely to, going to be built within the Ag Reserve as a full range of housing options was supported by the master plan. They did include multi-family and townhomes, but as Lisa mentioned, the way to develop is to have a greater percentage of Ag Reserve areas for those higher densities. So the certain options that the board has include not having any policy changes. But if the board so inclines to add policies and language to foster or encourage higher density with workforce housing, we would have to be, have direction on location requirements, similar to the industrial use. But location requirements, do we do an overlay or do we do it just along a frontage? Possibly just on the major corridors, Boynton Beach Boulevard and Atlantic Avenue, rather than opening it up to the entire Ag Reserve tier. We'd need to have direction on the housing type. Is multi-family or townhomes or a smaller single lot size or all of the above? We need to also decide on the single type or multi-type or mix of uses, whether we would include residential if it also included commercial and industrial in the mixed-use developments. And then the house, workforce housing requirements, 25% flat fee, limited to 10% for single-family, 20% to townhome, 25% to multi-family. There are a lot of decisions to be made on that. And then onsite or in-look fee would need to be discussed as well. For, another option would be for the board to add a new future land use category altogether in the Ag Reserve, perhaps for higher densities residential or for multiple land use designations that would accommodate that higher density, reduced Ag Reserve planned unit development minimum acreage or using multiple use zoning plan development regulations, also requiring concurrent zoning application so that the board can see everything all at once, including the site plan, and/or providing acreage minimums and maximums, just like we did with the commercial cap, perhaps capping the number of residence units in the Ag Reserve. So the board may provide specific direction today or at a subsequent workshop. We have provided a lot of information. Or provide us guidance to come back with a full data and analysis staff report based off of specific direction for future transmittal hearing. On any changes, it will be key to provide further analysis for traffic and service delivery impacts, of course. So we'll have to coordinate with every single department. And as our final slide, we just want to conclude by stating that the master plan efforts from 1999 dealt with many of the development pressures that we still see today and provided guidance in balancing the multitude of competing interests. We believe that the objective to preserve agriculture, environmental, and water resources in open space have, for the most part, been realized and developed as planned with thousands of acres preserved as well as thousands of units produced and is now a home to approximately 25,000 residents in the Agricultural Reserve. County staff do still continue to uphold the existing goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. You may hear other site-specific requests today from the public that we're not addressing through this workshop, but may require future meetings and future assessments. But should the board seek to make changes to these policies, staff is seeking direction on industrial uses and the higher density with workforce housing. So following the input from the public as well as board discussion, we'd like to present a few slides with those different categories and we can have that discussion with the board if you wish, as well as discuss any future plans for holding at any additional meetings. And with that, thank you to all the staff and all the departments and thank you, Board, for your time.
Thank you. That was an excellent presentation. I think the best course of action right now is we'll take a 10-minute break. It's 11:05. We've been going at this for about an hour and a half. And then we'll come back for questions by the board and then we'll get into public comment. And then we'll have further discussions. So the board will be in recess until 11:15. Thank you.
To call the Board of County Commissioners back to order, if you could please find your seats. And I'll just give you a little update on what the plan is for the duration of the workshop. We're going to return to the workshop on the agricultural reserve tier at this time. And we're going to take questions from the board on the presentation. Then I'm going to recognize my colleague Commissioner Sacks for a presentation and perspective. Then we're going to go into public comment. And there are three types of public comment in person here today. There's those in the chamber, those in the atrium, and those in McKeady Conference Room because of capacity limitations. We're going to rotate so that each area has opportunity to not have to wait all day. So we're going to rotate it. Commissioner Bernard's going to handle that. And then we're going to, regardless of where we're at in public comment, at 12:30, we're going to take a brief recess for lunch. And that will be 30 minutes. So we'll recess at 12:30 and return at 1:00. We have about 50 cards at this point in time. So at three minutes apiece, that's over two hours of public comment. And you should feel free to use your three minutes as you wish, but also understand that many points will be made by many members of the public that are similar or the same, and they're common in nature. So please feel free to waive a portion of your time, or simply say, "I support no changes," or "this change," or "that change." Or feel free to utilize your three minutes in full. So at this time, we'll go back to the board for questions on the presentation by professional staff. And we'll have an opportunity, obviously, to ask questions later in the workshop and also, obviously, have our public policy debate. Are there any questions at this time? Commissioner Weiss, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the very thorough program or slides, presentation. Thank you. Can you, do we know what percent of the housing there is age-restricted? And if so, do we have that mapped out where they're at?
We don't have that information offhand, but we can have somebody take a look at that.
And then of the lands that are being, the ag lands that we have, do we know what percent is, you know, traditional agriculture, you know, in the ground? How much is equestrian? How much of it is nursery-type uses?
I believe we do have a slide on that.
You mean of, I have that data for the preserve areas. That data for the preserve areas, we do have a slide. Yeah, 114, which says that of the AGR-PDD preserve areas, now this doesn't include the bond purchases.
And we do have, I'm sorry, a couple of backup slides that aren't included in your presentation.
Because we weren't sure which types of information, we have about 50 other slides that we didn't include in the presentation, but wanted to make sure that we had that data, so.
Okay, good.
Just showing it on the screen. This is just the AGR-PDD preserve areas. So it doesn't include, like, for example, the bond areas or that 1,200 other remaining. But of the preserve areas, there's about 2,200 acres in crops, almost 900 acres of equestrian, almost 700 acres of nursery. And that's 3,800 acres just in the AGR-PDD preserves. We do have, you know, in total, there's about 10,000 acres, as Ron presented, in agricultural production. So that is just the preserve areas. Then there's the lands, the other remaining, and then other lands that might have an AGR-PDD approval, such as Whitworth, that's in crops today. That's, Whitworth is 578 acres or so that's in crops. So I think that's about as close as.
I mean, it would be, I think, well, for me anyways, and if it's not ready today, I'd like to see if you could send me, you know, of all the agriculture that's going on there, and how much is being done with what, you know? It would, just to have an understanding, because my next question is then, you know, and you went over the goals of it. And so I guess my next question is, and that's where I need, it would be helpful to know what people are actually doing. But what have we done? You know, what policies have we put in place to actually enhance ag activity?
There was a lot of discussion in the master plan about enhancing agricultural activity. And policies in the plan, I don't think provide specific programs, but there were discussions on ag enhancement programs. I don't know if Ron can speak to any specific programs for the particular ag reserve area, but there's a lot of opportunities in grant funding for agriculture in the county as a whole.
This could be a question that we could raise with the Agriculture Enhancement Council to see what their plan is. I know in the far past, before I really came on board, we have enhanced some of the agriculture, like some of the packing houses and some of the infrastructure development in ag reserve. And we also did some things out in the EAA. Not recently, I don't recall anything specific.
Okay. I think it would be really, I mean, if that, it seems, I mean, in reading, you know, reading that as a goal, it would sort of, there's, it seems to be a little bit of a disconnect between the programs and policies and that being an overriding, sort of the overriding goal. In the, looking at the parks, they're showing growth rate, population growth continuing to go on, but assuming that you hit your 14,000, why would you continue to show population increase?
Let me see if Bob Hamilton, he's available on WebEx if he can provide us information on that.
Morgan, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, the population that you lies came from the population allocation model and increases over time. This is the population data that's provided by PZP, so that's the numbers that you're able from that data.
So that would be the 10,000 acres, I mean, 10,000 dwelling units that are approved today, plus the additional existing residential development that's in the tier. And then also growth, because there is the potential for more units today. There's that 1,700 acres that theoretically could have 1,700 units. The allocation model does take into account the one-to-one acreage cap in the tier, and it doesn't accommodate, you know, it doesn't anticipate any more than that. So there is still growth potential in the ag reserve, other than what's built today because of those PUD approvals that are partially built out. And then also the other remaining lands that have potential to grow.
Okay, because I mean, if you, if we've got 14,000 units, I mean, and that's the cap. I mean, and I don't know, and they're not all going to be, I understand they're not going to be all built at the same time, but that there would be continued growth out there, just, I mean, it doesn't logically make sense, that's all. And I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding that. And another question, do we know how many school buses drive around out there?
I do have somebody on, Jason Link from the school district, if he's able to unmute on WebEx. Do you have a number of school buses out there in the ag reserve? May not be available. And Chris Garrison, we'll get that information and provide it to you shortly.
Okay.
And I do have more specific acreages on agriculture in the tier as a whole, if you'd like those. I did find my cheat sheet about.
Slow, I'm going to write them down.
About, I'm sorry, do you want me to say them, or?
If you want, I'm going to write them down.
There's about almost 6,000 acres in crops, that 800 or so in equestrian, 1,000 in nursery, 150 in landscapers with nurseries, and about 265 in what we call heavy agriculture, which is be packing plants and those type of things.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Weiss. Commissioner Moreno.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for sitting down with me, going over these slides. It's very helpful. I have a multitude of questions, and hopefully they'll, the questions will answer everybody else's questions. But in no particular order, I feel like I'm on Dancing With The Stars, in no particular order. Number of nurseries in 2000 versus today. Do we have that? And do we have number of agricultural-producing farms in 2000 versus 2020? Because the idea of the ag reserve was to preserve this stuff, so I wanted to know if there's been an impact.
We, on the actual quantity of farms and numbers of businesses, we do not have that data. We do mostly our work in acreages rather than actual business owners, because a lot of times a nursery owner might lease out lands to another one, or it's a very complicated bit of data to track, so I don't think we have that.
Okay, because, you know, we, because we've heard comments and we've fielded phone calls and emails, hear both sides of the equation. We hear families that their children don't want to farm anymore, so they want to sell their land. And then we hear other, others in the ag business saying, you know, "What can you do to help us? Ag isn't dying." So, you know, it's up to us as a board to figure out what the balance is of that, and that's what we're doing here. Can you go over again what the uses on preserved land are?
Yes. And actually, if you can go to zoning compare, or do it, Valerie, if you can go to zoning compare, the other slideshow.
Yeah.
And who's got the clicker?
You know, because it is a constant assault on preserved land, so.
So this slide shows the, let me put my glasses on here. Okay, so this, it's really interesting in the ag reserve is that the large column, those are all of the uses you can do in regular ag reserve zoning. So it's got a whole range of, the green ones are in the top, are the only ones that you could also do in a preserve area. And so if you have straight AGR zoning, you didn't become a preserve, you can have things like a bed and breakfast, a veterinary clinic, a daycare, a church, government services, a school. But once you've become a preserve area, you can only do agricultural bona fide uses, or a packing plant, or a hobby breeder of birds, nursery, you do retail wholesale, shade house, you do a stable, or a passive park, not an active park. And then also, in some cases, the landscape nurseries as well. And then if you're in ag reserve commercial approval, the ag reserve traditional marketplace, or ag reserve multiple use development, you could also do in your preserve area, government services, and schools, and elementary and such. But that's the, that's the uses that you can do in regular AGR, and then what you can do in the preserve on the right.
So there's no example of ag-PDD preserves where they have civic uses, then?
You can only do civic uses in an ag-PDD preserve for the commercial sites. And it's only limited to government services, schools, and elementary, and parks and such, active parks. But you can't do it in a regular, you know, those 4,600 acres of privately-owned preserves, they cannot do civic uses, no.
Okay, thank you. I'm not done. So of the lands that have been set aside and preserved due to single-family or zero-outline development, how much of that is that, land set aside and preserved because of single-family development?
That's on the snapshot slide, let me see. About 6,000 acres, and that's.
So basically, development of single-family homes is put into preserve more than we have put into preserve buying the bond?
Yeah.
The land's bought by the bond.
If you can go to the other slide, presentation, go to slide 50. That's the snapshot. There's about 6,000 acres in residential land. And that's as a whole with the ones that are ADD, the preserve, I'm sorry, the ag reserve PUDs, and also some that are not ag reserve PUDs. There is residential development in the ag reserve that is not an AGR PUD. Those five-acre subdivisions, Willis Gliderport and such, it's about 6,000 acres.
So it's been a good partnership, doing the single-family housing and doing the purchase from the $100 million bond, then, to preserve land in the ag reserve?
Yes.
Okay, that's page one. Sorry. Light industrial, I know, you know, we, it's kind of like death by 1,000 cuts with what's happening, even just in my 11 months up here. So we really do need to have light industrial that supports ag uses. So again, can you please make some suggestions for us as to how to do that? I know there was a slide here, but could you outline it again for us?
Yes, and the, if I could show some of the zoning districts, Valerie, can you go to the other slideshow again? I'm so sorry. It's just faster to go to the other one than it is to find whatever page. Yeah, that one. So what we did, you can just do display. Yeah, what these, these are three slides. And what these three have is, this is an excerpt from our use matrix and our Unified Land Development Code. And so this one is all of the commercial uses that are allowed in IL IG, industrial, multiple, you know, industrial future land use designations. It's kind of long, because if you're a planned industrial park, you have three types of pods. If you're an economic development center, you know. But basically, everything on this slide is a comparison of commercial uses you could get in industrial future land use. Now, all of those red ones, this is the commercial slide, all of those red ones would be subject to the commercial cap. And this is why it's complicated, if we add industrial future land use in the tier, because all of those uses are subject to the commercial cap if the site was commercial. But, you know, we don't want an applicant using the industrial future land use designation as a backdoor way to getting uses that would be otherwise subject to the cap. And then this is a slide of industrial uses. This is for anyone that has industrial. And those purple uses are the type of uses that we would consider heavy industrial uses that might not be appropriate in the tier. And as you could see, some of them, like a machine or welding shop, they're just P for permitted, or a towing service and storage, they just go straight to building permit. They don't come through a site plan approval process. And then this last one, these are some other uses that are not, that are allowed in IL. Some of those green ones are allowed in AGR already, potting soil manufacturing, chipping, mulching, composting. But a lot of those other uses are not currently allowed in AGR. Those yellow uses, we have a policy in the plan that doesn't allow institutional uses west of State Road 7. So those uses, even though they were allowed in industrial, they wouldn't be allowed west of State Road 7, but they still would be allowed. So this is kind of the comparison, and this is why it's a challenge because of the amount of Ps and the amount of commercial uses, you know, because, see, it's repair-maintenance-heavy. It's P for permitted. So, you know, a lot of these uses, you could just, without having a new future land use designation, it makes it a challenge for us to approve industrial in the tier without having, you know, the parameters in the plan of what uses are allowed.
And from my notes the other day, we had talked about that, and that's something that we need to spend a little bit more time on, is the P for permitted, what should be the final, who should be the final sayer? And everything that I have read, whether it's the master plan, or the chronology, or your slides, nothing has said anything about affordable housing in the ag reserve, and nothing has said anything about density bonuses, because there is no affordable housing, there are no density bonuses. So what do we do going forward with folks that are coming to us that want to put six or eight or 10 units per acre? How does that affect people that have come before them?
Well, we have, currently, we are looking at density within the urban-suburban tier, and the board has expressed interest in taking a look at higher densities and putting density within a tier that we have service provision and delivery in. The ag reserve tier was not anticipated to have higher densities because of the balance of needs of, you know, preserving the agriculture and the wetlands, and open space, and water resource management. So it was not a priority to include higher densities in that area. That's where we are today. A lot of applicants, we've gotten calls from Missouri and the Midwest from developers saying, "This is vacant land. What else would go on that land?" And for us, it's not vacant, it's agricultural land. And for the most part, these are questions on the 1,700 acres, but we've also received questions from developers on those agricultural parcels that are, have no development rights right now, that are in preserves, that people have said, "We'd like to put in industrial parks." So a lot of people outside of the county are seeing this as just vacant land. They can come in and put increases of density and intensity on these parcels. I'm saying all of that just to say that we are looking at higher density within the agricultural reserve tier, but it's a legislative act on behalf of the board to make the decision to make changes to the master plan and all of the goals, objectives, and policies that are currently in the plan.
And if we were to make changes to the master plan, I think this would be something, and this is just a thought, but we probably need to have a consultant help us with a new master plan. And I think that might be one of the directions you're looking for from the board. Because we can't, we can't all do this on our own. And we have figured out the master plan based on 14,000 units, and I'm guessing that our roadway network was based on 14,000 units, and our fire rescue was based on 14,000 units. And now if we change that, we have a whole lot more, shall I say, improvement costs to the whole ag reserve if we do change densities.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, the idea of the one unit per acre was done specifically for the two reasons. One, to capture that preserve area with the 60-40, and also limit growth. I mean, and limit, and to do a financial analysis of what is the demands of growth, and that's why that 14 was chosen. And so, yes, absolutely, to go and start adding more units is a complete legislative decision, but it would be most effective to do it with a consultant and look at, again, that financial impacts of adding more density and adding the services that they would need.
Because there were a lot of, as going through the slides that you just put through, there were a lot of questions that I had about Palm Tran, because there is no. because there is no, you know, there is no way to move people around out there and that would be another cost to the county if we did include Palm Tran going on the Boynton Beach Boulevard and Atlantic. The, there was a slide, and it was from the Phase 2, I believe, that sadly said, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it here. The one about having, it was slide 58. Businesses that can offer farmers a second job. That's a sad state of affairs if we have to figure out second jobs for our farmers. That means their farms aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. So there's got to be a balance for that, too. And I realize that was just part of the first comments from Dover Coal, but it's out there. That means there's people thinking about it. I have more questions, but I will yield to the rest of my commission because I'm sure they have questions, too. And if they're not answered, I'll bring them back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you. Commissioner Marino, that was on the economic centers. So the quote here is, "Many Florida farmers, especially those with smaller farms, work second jobs." The 1997 U.S. Census of Agriculture found that 43% of Palm Beach County farmers supplemented their income with another job. Ron, that statistic is almost 25 years old. Do we have a more recent one? Okay, yeah, I have a problem making decisions based on data. That's 25 years old. I get the, I get the statement there and so I guess one of the things, number one, I get a little nauseous when I hear, "Hire a consultant." We just did that between, what, 2013 and 2016? We had a consultant do the ag reserve. We had all of the charrettes done and we spent, I don't know, how much money did we spend on that consultant?
We actually used, Commissioner, it was a facilitator and conducted a number of meetings with stakeholders and all the policies and changes were developed by staff following presentations to the board. But there were a number of meetings and I don't know the exact dollar value.
Okay. I feel like we know the direction that we need to be considering and delaying this by another two to three years and kicking the can down the road. This ag reserve, it's a very unique parcel. And there's a lot of numbers here that are being thrown around that I wouldn't mind some clarification on, but this whole proposal was developed 21 years ago. You know, 21 years ago, about this time, I just found out I was pregnant with my third child, had an eight-month-old and a two-year-old at home and that the one who is in my tummy at that time is now a junior in college. Things have changed. And we need to reflect some of that change while still trying to do what we can to enhance agriculture in this area and protect those that still want to do agriculture in this area. And so when you, one thing, when I saw that 43% have a second job, one of the things I'd really like us to focus on moving forward, the lingo, is working farms and working land and trying to make it more flexible for them, for our agricultural community and those smaller farmers to be able to do things on their land in addition to agriculture. And I think of Steve Bednar, Stephen Marie Bednar and Bednar Farms, where they've got the market there, they've got the farms, they do the fall festival, they get special permits. They do a lot of creative things. There's a lot of agro tourism legislation that has passed the legislature, which has actually preempted us, some of it good, some of it bad. But, you know, doing the farm-themed weddings and event pavilions, that type of thing, where a farmer can generate additional income while still farming their land. Farmers markets, those types of things, being creative and allowing them to continue in agriculture while supplementing their income is something I think we need to look at. And Ron, I would bet there are some best practices across this country that we could look to. He's nodding his head, yes, if you can't see him on the camera.
Commissioner McKinley, could I just interrupt you for one second and recognize our administrator?
Okay.
I'll wait.
Oh, my apologies.
So, questions? We talk, you talk about, I'm looking at the slide on page 25, which is the 2021 snapshot. So of the lands preserved, 12,839 acres, that's 58%. 6,059 of those are in agriculture. And then you state 4,000 of that 6,059 are privately held? And then you're saying 1,700 acres here and I'm just, there's just a lot of numbers going around. So can you tell me, how many acres are in preserve?
Slide 50, actually.
The, how many acres in preserve today are 12,838? There's natural and conservation lands, agricultural lands. And that figure on the snapshot slide includes government-owned lands as part of the bond, government-owned lands that are in conservation future land use designation that are not subject to the AGR PDD and such. So the snapshot slide shows all of the lands preserved, whereas the slide with the PUDs on it shows the ones that has the lands that are in PUD preserve areas. And that doesn't have the uses, it just has ownership.
And what slide number is that?
68.
68.
Right. The difficulty with the ag reserve calculations is the overlapping of preserves, conservation lands, things that are owned by the county or other local government agency as well as privately preserved lands versus the publicly preserved lands. So there's a lot of, we try to provide as much information as possible, but we can understand how it can get a little bit confusing with the different screens.
Yes, some of the government-owned land is in an AGR PUD preserve area, such as lands owned by the district, and so that's why the math is hard. So this is, this slide shows the 4,600 or so acres of privately owned preserve area. Now, everything green on this map, in bright green is the privately owned. And then the mottled green up at the top, that's mostly district lands.
Okay, I'm going to ask again, just so I have it clear, and while I wait for my coffee to hit. Slide 50 on page 25 of the packet that we have up here, that 2021 snapshot, 12,839 acres in preservation. That includes everything for the general public. They're not sitting up here getting technical like we are with the AGR PDDs and PUDs and MUPDs and everything else that's out there. I stopped talking in acronyms. Everything that is in preserve, no matter who owns it, is 12,839 acres.
Correct.
And so the 6,193 of that, that's in natural conservation, that's not being farmed at all?
Correct.
Who maintains that?
Some of it's district land, some of it's state and some of it's county.
Okay, but over here, preserve ownership is 4,664 acres of privately-held preserve.
Right, so we have some preserves within that are part of a residential approval. And there's some that are not. So there are 4,664 that are in private ownership.
Okay, so who's maintaining those 4,664 acres?
They're privately owned and privately maintained. And, you know, I do, there's, there is natural lands that are privately owned in preserve area. There's about 400 acres. Those would be privately maintained. But most of the preserve area that is privately owned is an agriculture, equestrian or nursery.
Okay, so of the government-owned land out of that 6,193, what public benefit does the type of public access, so public benefit do we have for our constituents, for our residents?
Well, the state, there's state, South Florida Water Management District lands, as I said, and ERM. I mean, we believe we have ERM that can talk to any of the ERM environmentally sensitive lands areas that are in the ag reserve.
And if you take a look at the map on that slide 50 with the natural conservation, it's that speckled green and white area and you'll see that most of those lands are surrounding the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge. So it is providing a buffer to that wildlife refuge. Now, there's no, I don't believe that there's public benefit. I mean, each one of those parcels are going to provide different, it's open land space, open space and wetland preservation. So in that, it's still a public benefit to allow for that to occur.
No ecotourism type of benefit to it at all?
I was going to add on to kind of what Patricia was saying. These lands lend themselves more to the preservation concept, not the public access concepts.
Okay, and what is the cost for us to maintain those lands?
So not all 6,193 are owned by the county. 6,193 portions of them are owned by the South Florida Water Management District. There are some federal state lands of south of Boynton Beach, west of State Road 7. And then there's some county-owned lands on the south side, I believe. But we can provide some specific figures from ERM and other.
We can ask, we don't have the numbers certainly on lands that we own, what maintenance dollars are involved.
And that land came into preservation as a result of our policies that created the ag reserve? Or was that land already in conservation and government ownership?
On the ones that, all of the government-owned lands in the ag reserve today that are not owned by the county predate the master plan. The district hasn't purchased any new lands in there, other than the McMurrayan property it shared with us, to my knowledge, prior to 1989. There are some state and federal lands and I don't believe that any have been purchased since 89. The county has acquired some natural lands since 1989 in the ag reserve. One or two of them is associated with a preserve area. We were able to purchase it after it became an AGR PUD preserve area for less because the development rights had preserved, I mean, had been removed. But, you know, I don't know if ERM knows off the top of their head how much of that land was acquired by the county since 1989.
Deb's behind you.
Hi, good morning. I'm Ron with Palm Beach County ERM. I don't have the specifics of the acreage that you're talking about. All I can say is that only about 216, as was in the presentation, about 216 of those acres are acreage that ERM manages in the east conservation area. There aren't any other inventory of natural areas that are managed by the county as natural areas in the area, except for that 216 acres. It is not open to the public. To get to your question about how the constituents are served with public use facilities, there are some safety concerns of that particular site related to the previous mining activities on the site. And the Strazula wetlands, which are the majority of the conservation acreage that I believe are presented on the slide, are also not open to public at this time. But the Loxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge and ERM have been having some discussions over the years about the potential of looking at some connections between the sites or looking at some potential for public use facilities that would link to the larger wildlife refuge.
Okay, is Strazula actually in the boundaries of the ag reserve?
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't know it went that far north. Okay. Yeah, it would be, it would be great to be able to incorporate ecotourism uses in the ag reserve on these parcels if we're maintaining them and spending money. I get the conservation part, but having some public access would be great. Can you tell me what the difference is between light industrial and light manufacturing?
The light industrial is kind of an umbrella term that we've put in the plan to talk about any industrial uses that might be not noxious to their neighbors type of thing. When we looked at the use and use matrix, we thought that there are probably manufacturing and processing uses that could fall under the light umbrella. For example, something that's really popular in the county right now is those, they're called, sometimes I think called Class C, sometimes called office showroom, sometimes called flex space. You know, our most popular industrial development right now is the showroom in the front and the bays in the back and the vehicle goes in the back. One of those tenants might manufacture something. So but if it's in one of those types of structures, we think that would be a light industrial type of use. There is a, there is a facility actually in ag reserve zoning in the ag reserve now that makes, that manufactures styrofoam, some kind of containers for shipping of produce, that we would consider a light manufacturing use. Something involving any kind of flammable substance or noxious substance, we would probably call it a more of a heavy type of manufacturing kind of use. There's a big manufacturer on Congress in Palm Springs, Oxygen that came in a few years ago that looks like a giant box of a building. They manufacture cosmetics. We would consider that a light-style manufacturing type of plant.
I know, but you keep using those words interchangeably and they would have different meanings in the code. So I'm asking, we already allow light manufacturing on some parcels and we're talking about adding a light industrial. Why would we need light industrial if we have light manufacturing?
Well, that term "light manufacturing" is something that we used as part of this presentation as a way to bifurcate manufacturing uses that currently doesn't exist in the code. You know, if we have direction today to pursue a different future land use designation or different code language, we would need to separate out and define in the code what would be a heavy manufacturing and what would be a light manufacturing.
Would it be appropriate to be even a little bit more definitive and do a light industrial landscape services classification, or is that too specific?
Well, landscape services is one of those uses that, in some respects, as far as infrastructure put on the site, it is a bit of a light kind of use in that it doesn't have a lot of physical infrastructure and buildings and that type of respect. We would anticipate that if we had a new flu, because of what the landscape service community has worked with us on the past several years, that even if we didn't exactly consider it a light kind of industrial, but it would be accommodated within a new future land use designation specific to the ag reserve.
Okay, so that answers some of my questions, at least related to industrial and related to ag. Now let's talk about residential. When you talk about, one of your suggestions in here, and the Lord, there's too many pieces of paper up here. One of your suggestions was possibly, when you're talking about different home types, you talk about multifamily townhomes and smaller lot sizes. And that one is really attractive to me. I'm a big fan of tiny homes or Virginia calls them cottage homes. So what did you have in mind when you made that suggestion?
We wanted to provide the board with all of the options available. So if you were going to talk about a different housing type, that is one of the available options. So if you wanted a smaller, single-lot availability, that would provide for more housing within a certain acreage. You know, we'd need to then discuss additional items, such as what the workforce housing requirement would be on that. But similar to cottage lots, something totally different than what we have right now in the ag reserve, but it's an option that the board could make a decision on.
Yeah, I mean, they're small, but they're still single-family homes. They're just smaller ones and you could still do homeownership and they become a lot more affordable. Have you done any sort of conversation with the Business Development Board or any of our chambers to find out how many of the workers in those commercial nodes, the schools and the hospital there actually are able to afford to live in the ag reserve? And if not, how far are they commuting to get to their job?
Because we wanted to get first direction from the board as to the specifics on any changes, we would do that in the future. Now, that's one of the reasons why the consultant in 2016 only facilitated the roundtables. There was no... in 2016 only facilitated the roundtables. There was no real data and analysis that was done at that time. But if we were to move forward, not just the impacts to the service delivery would need to be done with the fiscal impact analysis that we are not professionals at, we would also want to do that kind of business, commercial, business development type of, what employment centers are producing, how many employees, how many employees are needed in that particular area. We just have those two traditional marketplace developments, and at the time of the master plan, they had, the consultant at that time had done all of that work. We both, I don't know if you can see, we both have huge binders full of all of the addendums and the Phase 2 reports and all of that work that was done at that time. But all of that needs to be taken into consideration to be able to develop a full, comprehensive plan.
Right. Because when you went through each department, and they, you know, you went to fire, and you went to libraries, and you went to engineering, you also went to resiliency. And when you look at the goals of Meghan's office, our practices in the Ag Reserve completely contradict every single one of those resiliency goals when you're talking about the light industrial, the farmworkers, the commercial nodes, and the civic uses, because none of those employees can afford to live in the homes that are built there. So everything that we've done to date has protected the original intent of the Ag Reserve, but it also completely contradicts every resiliency goal that this county has. So I'll save my, rest of my comments for later. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Administrator, you had some comments?
I was simply going to, and staff just kind of laid it out. I do think it's critical that if the board sends us back to make modifications, that we do hire a consultant for the very reasons outlined by Patricia, looking at the fiscal impact and a number of other factors that was originally looked at. So when we make the decision, we all know what the financial impact will be in the long run. And just to give this board, as well as other boards, kudos, because we have worked with the farmers. You've made additional modifications so that they could do different things on their land, including transferring off density and selling it off, and just keeping enough for the home that they had on the property. So we have worked with the farmers in the past. We will continue. It is one of our major industries here in Palm Beach County, and this board has supported it.
All right, very good. Thank you, Madam Administrator. I just have a couple quick questions, and then we'll get to Commissioner Sacks. Can you remind me with specific clarity, the $100 million in bond revenues, what those broad categories were that the monies were expended on?
The categories? They purchased in agricultural lands in the Ag Reserve?
Was that the only expenditure that it was used for?
To my knowledge, but we do have, yeah, we do have facilities to be able to answer specifically to that information, Isme or Purvy, if you're available, or you wanted to talk to.
Good afternoon. Isme Ajala, PBC Facilities Development, and yes, it was basically for purchasing of lands in the Ag Reserve.
And so the lands that were purchased, they were privately owned, obviously, before the purchase. And were there good faith negotiations, or was it eminent domain? How did the process work?
Negotiations, to the best of my knowledge, back then.
Okay. And how was the land valued at the time? Does it, did it take into account what the underlying land use was at that time?
It did. And the transactions also took into account the uses and the rights that were being becaded from the properties.
And then were the land uses stripped of the land, or how is the land protected? Through conservation easements?
Yes, they were.
Okay. And so were there, were there lands that were purchased where, that were farmed at the time, and then purchased from a farmer, and then they were able to continue farming that land?
We do have several instances in which that was the case, and we do have leases in the Ag Reserve that provide precisely for agricultural uses. We have 12 leases right now.
And so during those transactions, in the instances where the farmer sold their land, it was with their knowledge and their consent. It was a contractual meeting of the minds. So was there ever an instance where the government came in and stripped, or took property rights away from people without due compensation?
Not to my knowledge, and my colleagues that were here then can correct me if I'm wrong.
All right. And then just broadly speaking, it sounds like about 6,000 acres of land as a result of the bond referendum were put into basically perpetual protection. Does that, is that fair to say?
The bond was responsible for setting aside of about 2,400 acres that we own today.
24 acres that we, 2,400 that we own, and is there above and beyond that lands that were protected by conservation easement?
The, we sold the 75-acre Bowman out of that, and the 53-acre Perro Farms, those in it as well. So it's between 2,400 and...
What was your question? Are there additional lands that are preserved from the bond?
Yes.
No, there were just the 2,455 that we have right now in ownership of, from the county.
And then what about when a property's developed and the 60-40 split occurs?
Those are private, in some cases, they're privately, the private ownership and the deals are with the owner of the development, as well as the private owner of that land.
Right. But those lands that go as a result of that transaction are protected, correct?
Correct. Through a conservation easement that has to be recorded, and all of the documentation within that easement specifically states all of the objectives of the comprehensive plan, what that land is supposed to be used, and the property owner is fully aware that the development rights have been stripped for purposes of agricultural land, wetlands, open space, et cetera.
So between the actual purchase outright, and then the property's protected by conservation easement, does that in any way further our resiliency goals here in the county by having open lands and lands that can be used to farm on, basically?
From that perspective, yes. For water, water sources and open space, and some of those goals and the resiliency, yes. Not from the new urbanism perspective, but it does in the environmental and the water resource perspective, it does.
And in fact, the overall policy was never to make the agricultural reserve an urban center as a whole. It was the exact opposite of that.
The idea from the consultants were those two corridors to have more of an urban design, but the board really saw just two major corners, the northeast corner of Atlantic and Lyons, and then the south, no, northwest of Atlantic and Lyons, and southeast of Boynton.
And that was to accommodate the needs of the anticipated, back 21 years ago, 14,000 dwelling units and now 25,000 people. It's not some sort of surprise to us that there are people living in the Ag Reserve, and there's 14,000 homes going to be built there at some point in time. That was, in fact, part of the plan itself. As far as the conservation easement lands, those are privately held?
Well, the ones in the AGR-PUD preserves, those conservation areas are privately held for the most part.
Would it behoove the board or the county as a whole to find larger strategies to accommodate farming on? I mean, obviously, we can't direct people, and we can't make property owners do anything with it, but a lot of those lands just sit idle, I understand, and are not farmed.
We, I think you have that. We do have some, there is some land and preserve area that is not being farmed or used, and it's just kind of vacant. But the bulk of the preserve lands are 2,000 acres in crops, and, you know, 600 acres of nursery. There is some that, that is, you know, we have over 200 acres that are vacant, where they're just, we call fallow. And there's some open space around 250 acres that we call open space. They're not actively farmed.
Are there strategies that the county can consider to help attract farming to those lands that sit idle?
There was a lot of discussion in the master plan, and there was a lot of ideas about farm-to-table and the agrotourism that Commissioner McKinley mentioned and those programs. But I do not think, as, you know, we talked earlier with Ron, that we'd have a specific program for the Ag Reserve.
Right. Well, maybe that, like, much like the working farm concept that Commissioner McKinley has discussed, and is in fact, on a certain level occurring already, perhaps we can evaluate strategies to attract ecotourism or agricultural operations on those lands through county incentives. I'll go now to Commissioner Sacks for a presentation, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank the county commissioners for exploring different ways on how we can renew and reinvent and revigorate the agricultural reserve. And I want to thank the staff, and I'm going to name you, Lisa Mara, Pat Ben, Patrick Rutter, Todd Von Leren. Thank you so much for spending hours with me as we explored all the different ways that we can revitalize the rules on the agricultural reserve. And certainly, I want to thank my staff, who may be watching today, so I want to make sure that I mention them, because they have been amazing. They are my, they're my right hand and left hand. That's Vivian Leyva, Janet Argulis, Jerome Bianco. And I want to thank the lovely lady to my left, Virginia Baker, without whom none of this would have been possible. We're really approaching an area now, in a time, and an opportunity that we can develop something that in my lifetime, we have never challenged, been challenged before to do, and that is to rebuild a community that has been given to us, this beautiful area of the agricultural reserve. And I think that we owe it not just to the people who are in this room today, who are facing us, and wanting us to do something to revitalize this area, but also to the families who have yet to arrive here in the state of Florida. And that we owe them a very good place to live, work, and play as they choose to live here. Because, you know, you got to do the math, and I kind of look at Commissioner to my right, Marino, who's very, very good with numbers. If you look at the math, there are, Florida's the number-one destination for people to move into in this year. Number-one destination. And if you look at the U.S. Census Bureau, the largest group of people in the United States today, larger than any other group in the history of the United States, is no longer my generation, not anymore, 93.2 million millennials. And they all want something different than what my generation would want, and what we have really planned for all these years. So the millennials are changing the real estate business, the real estate market, and they are changing the way we do business today. And we want all those young families coming into this state of Florida to continue to come down south and come and live here in our beautiful Palm Beach County. So what is the Ag Reserve all about? And I've done, I know you've done a lot of work, and everyone here has given it a lot of thought and done a lot of work. But I went out and I met with a lot of groups of people, and it's three things that really define the agricultural reserve. Number one is agriculture. Agriculture. That was the whole idea of the agricultural reserve. So, I mean, it was called the Agricultural Reserve in 1980. And why was it called the Agricultural Reserve? It wasn't necessarily because of a county commission, but it was something that God gave this area, and that is soil. And there was a slide that defined it. Soil that is so rich in nutrients, that is not necessarily like the soil that produces some of the greatest agriculture in the country that is, that is in Commissioner McKinley's district, and is not necessarily the soil that you're going to find in the beaches that you're going to find in another commissioner's district. But it is the soil of the Ag Reserve that produces fruits and vegetables that are completely unique to the state of Florida. And so we want to find out, what is it that the farmers who are farming these areas, what is it that the farmers want in their production of these fruits and vegetables? So I asked the farmers. I didn't read anything. I went to the farmers, and I asked them. And I met with the farmers, and these are who I met with. I met with Bowman Farms. Bowman Farms has been farming here in Palm Beach County in the Ag Reserve since 1917, 1917. And he's dedicated, the family's dedicated to supplying Florida-grown palms and trees. I went out to Beefy Tree Farms, and I tell you, it's impressive. And he's a very proud farmer, and his family is very proud to continue to farm in Palm Beach County. I went to see Yi Farms, Roland Yi, 81 years of farming in Palm Beach County. And Yi Farms remains a trusted name in consistently delivering the safest and highest-quality specialty Asian produce. So if anybody here goes to a Chinese restaurant, you are probably eating some very good organic fruits and vegetables that were produced right here in Palm Beach County, in the Ag Reserve. Four generations of the family have been farming here in the Ag Reserve. Alderman Farms wants to continue to farm. Organic, conventionally-farmed produce without pesticides, synthetic, no synthetic fertilizers, GMOs, or antibiotics. It is an amazing farm, the Alderman Farms, that will continue and want to continue to grow here in Palm Beach County. Bednar Farms, which is already mentioned, since the 1970s, Bednar's passion for farming was instilled in his children. Three sons, Charles, Bruce, and Steve, along with grandson Jesse, continue to carry on Art's legacy for farming. They're hands-on farmers, dedicated to producing the highest and freshest level of quality produce available and available to us right here in Palm Beach County. And, you know, we talk about climate change, we talk about environmental issues. Who are the best stewards of our land? It's farmers. Farmers are the best stewards of the land, because they want to make sure that the water is there, that there's, that the soil is clean, and they've always been very, very good, traditionally good, best stewards of the land. And so, as was already mentioned before by Commissioner McKinley, the idea of ecotourism and agrotourism, we've got to continue more of that. We've got to encourage this, and I'm looking to the staff. We got to make sure that we have the right ordinances, zoning in place, to do what Bednar's has done, to do what Swank Farms has done, not far and far from, from Ag Reserve, to make sure that our children know where fruits and vegetables come from. And they're not wrapped in plastic at Publix, but they come right from our soil, right from our farms. And that's very, very important. So I, talking to the farmers, I asked them, what do they want? What can we do for them as a county commission? One of these is to respect their businesses. This is a business. It's not funny games. Take, make sure that our ordinances do not impede their production of agricultural products, and take care of that agricultural parkway that I guess we have been promising them for many, many years. They want to be able to continue to farm, and they want us basically to support and promote and advocate for good agricultural products, which is why this whole thing started. But it's not just the farmers. We have equestrians. We have Irish Acres. I went out and met Joe O'Donnell and the family at Irish Acres, and it's beautiful, absolutely gorgeous. So what do the equestrian community want? What do they want here? Well, they want open spaces for trails. You can't keep a horse on an acre of land. Horses like to get out, and they like to pasture their herd animals, and they like to have other horses around. Just ask my horse. He's all by himself. He's very lonely. But they, but that's what the equestrians are. We have a very highly productive and active equestrian community here. And we have landscapers here. It's all part of agriculture. So I went out and I met with many of the landscapers. Wolf Hill Nursery at Alaco, Kevin Costello at Kem, Pat O'Brien at Geronimo Farms, one of the finest places to get muggin- at Geronimo Farms, one of the finest places to get bogan villas in the county many, many years, and he's been doing a wonderful job at it. So if we look at what the staff has, has done here on page, on actually slide 30, and if you could pull it up, please, slide 30, let me read it quickly. "The goal the consultant prepared in his interim report years ago was to preserve and enhance agricultural activity and environmental and water resources in the ag reserve and produce a master development plan compatible with these goals." Then if you look underneath with the objectives, I'm going to read one. It says, "Create a functioned, self-sustaining form of development." That is our mission in this workshop. "To enhance and preserve agriculture and to make sure that we have a sustainable, sustaining form of development." So that's, that's the number one thing is, is preserve and protect and support agriculture. The number two thing about knowing about the ag reserve is development required to serve the needs of the residents. I'm not making this up, I took it from slide 34, and if you could pull that up, if you could, slide 34. "The master plan," if you look at the master plan on that, you could see new urbanism pattern, mixed uses, housing diversity, employment centers. We want, and I did a survey a number of months ago to my residents in the ag reserve, and I asked them, "What do you want? What is it that we can do as your government to make sure that you're happy living here as a resident in the ag reserve?" And just about every one of them said, "We want, we want to be able to have amenities here that take care of us." What does that mean? That means we want parks. Why is it that when I take my grandson to a park, I've got to go to the east? Because we don't have playgrounds, we don't have enough playgrounds here. The survey showed that the residents here want indoor sports. Why not? Why can't we take our kids to have a skating or ice skating park? Air-conditioned. When I was a kid, it didn't have to be air-conditioned, but today, the kids want air-conditioning, and they're very successful at it. Bicycle paths, no matter what age, we still ride bikes. A lot of my residents want cafes, delis, restaurants. They want sports that can be some of the greatest sports and fly, and fishing over at the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge. They want schools close by and possibly a college campus so that we can grow, we can grow our own farmers in agricultural, graduate school or undergraduate in, in agriculture. I asked the seniors, "What do you want? What would you like to have in your neighborhood, in your community?" They're not quiet about it, very, very, very loud. They want to be safe, they want to be able to walk or at least drive within five miles to pickleball courts, to a deli, to restaurants. There's no reason why any resident in the ag reserve has to drive east to get some of these amenities when in our master plan we say that this is what is the purpose and the mission of the ag reserve. We just need to recognize it and build it. I asked our communities, Valencia's, The Canyons, Palm Meadows, Cobblestone, Seasons. I went to them and asked them, "What do you want?" Now, one thing about my constituents, fellow, my fellow colleague, I've been representing most of these people for 10 years in the legislature. I know them. They're not quiet, and they know exactly what they want, and they're pretty vocal in telling me what they want. They want the amenities to serve them within five miles so they don't have to drive far away to go to a nice restaurant, have a couple of glasses of iced tea, and drive safely back home again, which is what we all want. So this new urbanism that's right there in the consultant's prepared program for the ag reserve, mixed uses, housing development, this is not just by my constituents. This is also by our business. Remember, I told you that, that we have to change, we have to change the way we do business? So I asked the person who I think is the guru of how we do business and how we can enhance and increase businesses here in Palm Beach County. And that person is Kelly Smallridge, who's the president of the Business Development Board, and she wrote a letter, you should all have a copy of it, but this is sort of the excerpts. "Companies have come back to the Business Development Board," I'm quoting from Kelly Smallridge, "after looking at our county have stated, quote, 'The cost of housing and the lack of affordable units has either disqualified us or has forced them to put their plans on hold until we develop a solution.' Many companies have opted to go to other parts of the state, especially manufacturing, distribution, life sciences, and tech firms. Not only do we have an affordability issue, but an inventory issue as well. Since COVID, there has been a large migration of people to our area. We still have more jobs than we have people employed, but people cannot afford housing in our county." This is from the head of the Business Development Board. So as I said, we're not just agriculture's number one, but number two, we have to have the amenities to take care of the people who are coming in to our county. And of course, I have Jim Chard, who wrote a letter, and we all have a copy of him, I'm just going to take a few sentences out of his letter. He's, Jim Chard is a former mayor of Delray and has been a very active proponent of how to develop well in this area, and he emphasizes mixed use, which fosters walkability, affordability, and environmental health. It sounds like a mantra of the millennial generation, many of whom do not own cars or will only have one car. And I've got three kids who are in the millennial generation, so I know this is what they want. They want open spaces for outdoor living, they want to be able to live with agriculture and agritourism and farm to table, but we have not provided them the housing for them to move here in this area. And this is one of our missions, as the consultants have already told us. And the third thing that you need to know about the ag reserve, one is agriculture, two is the amenities to take care of the people of the ag reserve. I just got to tell you something funny. A lady said to me, she goes, "You know, my husband likes to hang out at a deli, but I got to tell you, there are no nail salons close to where I live." I said, "Oh, my gosh," you know, and I'm looking at my nails, and I realize, I've lived in the ag reserve for 36 years, and, and I've raised five children, and now four grandchildren and one on the way. So it, it touches me. It touches me. And, and I know for a fact that the people we need to listen to, my fellow colleagues, are the people who live, work, and play in this beautiful area. The third part of the ag reserve we need to know is infrastructure. And I referred to slide 82, if you could pull that up, because it kind of gives an idea for everybody, and I'm working with the staff reports so that it's all consistent with, with what we need to work on. Infrastructure has to keep pace with development. You cannot build housing without having roads. I mean, if you told anybody in the 40s or 50s, "We're going to build a whole new development here, and then we'll get to the roads. Don't worry about the water, we'll, we'll make sure you have water and sewage." And, oh, the fire stations? Well, your houses will take a while before they burn because we're going to build them right. And law enforcement, we'll get to that. We cannot build development, we cannot build anything, whether it's commercial, residential, retail, without having the infrastructure first. As I've said before publicly, the shovel doesn't go in the ground till I make sure that that road is able to accommodate the people. So somebody said to me, "Well, Sacks, what are you doing? You're going to have more housing here to accommodate all these people who are moving in?" No, we're going to be smart about it. So I went and I studied some of the University of Arizona and University of Florida and Florida Atlantic University. I spoke with the professors of architecture and land, land use and urban design. I said, "How do we do this? How do I build housing units and don't adversely affect traffic?" And he said, "You build the housing," and they, and these professors are here to answer any questions or to help as, as consultants, our community consultants with staff. "You build communities where people don't have to drive." I said, "Well, how do you, what do you mean?" Because, you know, I'm, I'm a kid of the 1950s, we got in the car to go anywhere. He said, "Well, today, if you have units where people live and they can go down an elevator or they can walk into their community and they've got a fresh market, and they've got their nail salons, and they've got a school within bicycle distance," he said, "that way you obviate traffic." Because people don't have to drive to get to Publix. Publix is, is right downstairs, or Fresh Market, or Aldi's, or Trader Joe's, or whatever they want. And that's the way that we need to plan for the future. The future is now, the future is here. So I really encourage my colleagues, and I think you're already there, that when we look at this area of the ag reserve and how we're going to develop it with rules and zoning and ordinances and everything else, we look at it with the plan that we are developing today, we're writing these rules today for the families of today who are coming here, and we want them to stay here and have their families here and have businesses here and pay taxes here and grow. And, and, and we need to do that for the families today and the families who are yet to arrive. So I think this is all I have right now. I think that it's about ready maybe to take a lunch break or so. But mayor and vice mayor and my colleagues, thank you so much for bringing this forward. It's a very important discussion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Sacks, for your comments and perspective. Vice Mayor Weinroth, you're recognized.
Thank you. Before we go to lunch, I wanted to say, Commissioner Sacks, I, I appreciate the boldness of your remarks today, because obviously, we've been receiving a lot of remarks from residents that are saying, "Leave it alone, don't change anything." And I think you have raised the issues that are very important to me, and I think to many of us sitting up here, is how do we respond to a county that's changed over the last couple of decades? And what was the perspective when the ag reserve was first contemplated? And the priorities that were put on the table? I'm not saying that we ignore them, but I'm saying that you have touched upon the real emphasis that I think each one of us is cognizant of, is that we need to foster walkability, affordability, and in environmental health, and we can do that by reimagining and reviewing what has been going on in the ag reserve and how we can preserve what we've tried to do, which is preserve agriculture, but also be sensitive to the needs of our residents. And I'm not as concerned with the ones who are coming down from New York right now who want to buy a place sight unseen, buying for cash and overbidding prices here. I'm talking about a residence who've lived here for years and years and years. Our kids who want to live here and work here, and they can't because they can't afford to be here. And I think that is what our responsibility is going to be. And we're going to listen this afternoon to a lot of comments, and I'm sure a lot of people would like us not to change anything in the ag reserve. But I, I compliment you and I commend you for the boldness of your remarks today, because I think that you have touched upon a lot of the subjects that I was going to discuss later on, that we do need to encourage a review of this that's going to be more responsive to our residents' needs going forward. So thank you very much, Commissioner Sacks.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Weinroth. As discussed earlier, we're going to now take a recess for 30 minutes. It is now 12:35, so we'll return back to the chambers at 1:05 for comments by members of the public. The board is in recess.